Okay, excellent. Thank you, Rob. It is November 21st and we are convening a special meeting of the Vermont Community Broadband Board at 8:01. Board members in attendance, we have Brian, Laura, Dan, myself, Holly, we expect, but she is not on as of yet. Our, what's our first action for agenda or for first item up for actions approval of the agenda? We have a jam-packed agenda. I'm a little skeptical we're going to get through it all, but we'll do our best to do so. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yeah, we'd like to make sure to make a change. We have, we have the Rule 3.7 and the budget as the last items. I don't, I don't think, Rob, what, do we need to make any changes? Those are the last items, so if we don't get to them, no big deal.
Our, our next meeting is, when is our next meeting? I can't access my calendar because I'm using my phone for the meeting. Can we take those items up at the December meeting?
Yes, we'll take a budget and make ready at the December meeting.
Yeah, I think at this meeting, we need to be sure. At this meeting, we need to be sure to discuss the B, digital equity, CV fiber, and Otter Creek are the most important items at this meeting. From the staff's perspective, that's where we're going, Christine.
Yeah, thanks. December.
Five. What are the other items for number four, five, and?
Otter Creek.
And eight, eight.
And eight.
Yep.
And I would also say 14, we can probably push that one off as well. I just, I'm not anticipating we're going to be able to get through all of this. So what, those three items, we are must-have to get through.
Right, thank you.
All right, and I'll just let the record, we can let the record state that Holly is just going to, welcome Holly. I'm going to let folks know, in the event you are texting me, I can't access the text messages because I'm doing the meeting on my phone. And it's very difficult for me to navigate back. You need to reach me, boy, you need to reach me during the meeting, probably the Vkey is the best.
Patty, I don't know if you heard me call you, this is Laura on the phone, I'm having a hard time connecting.
Okay, I did not hear you, Laura. I did see text messages pop up, Laura, from you, but I, do you, are you, are you by phone?
I am by phone.
Hey Patty, can I ask, were there materials related to the Otter Creek topic? Because I'm not sure I saw those.
There's an excellent, and I'm going to defer that to Christine.
No, there weren't materials. This was actually put on the board by the, by a board member at the last board meeting, asked to put it on the agenda.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure I didn't miss reading something.
It's in the executive director report, Brian.
The weekly?
Yes.
Okay, that's less than ideal. Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you, Laura. And I will also note that I was traveling yesterday, so I did not see the materials that came in yesterday, last evening. So, you know, again, we talked about the, we just created the policy in terms of materials coming in for board meetings. If they don't make the packet, you should assume they're not going to get seen.
Yeah, we did assume that. We just, this, this was things we're going to discuss in the meeting. Since, you know, this was a short, short week, considering last week, we had a board meeting, we scrambled to get together for this one. But, but the, the materials that we sent out last night, we understood were not necessarily going to be read. Tony will cover those.
All right, Holly, you're muted. I see that you're trying to speak, but you're muted. Go ahead.
Thank you for doing sign language for me. I, I, I would like to say that even though it was a short week last week, we should tailor the agenda to only be, as you have, Patty, only be what's necessary. I was at a funeral all weekend long. I saw nothing.
Oh, you didn't get the, you didn't get the packet?
I've got the packet, but you know, it's not like I spent the weekend reading it because there's other things to do. So I'm apologizing. I will do my best.
Okay. And what we, we run the risk of if, if enough board members have not seen material, we're not able to vote on things. So the, the bead, volume two with changes, I don't have a clue what changes there because I didn't, I was traveling last night. So I will abstain from that vote. If necessary. Okay.
Yep.
So we've, we've gone through the agenda, we've stressed the priorities as being four, five, and eight. Items on the agenda, items four, five, and eight as listed. Any other comments or changes to the agenda?
Patty, this is Laura.
Hi, Laura.
Hi, the legislative item should be in executive session.
Okay, good call. If we get to it. Okay, all those in favor of the, of the agenda? In the, we're going to take the agenda in the order that we have the priority discussed.
Patty, sorry, one more thing from Laura.
Yes.
At our last meeting, we also set, gave some direction to staff around legislative priorities, so I'd like to hear an update on progress on that. I'm not sure where that would come in. I don't think that was on the agenda.
Okay.
Does that have to be today? I mean, it's about timing, Laura, you would know.
Uh, you know, I think there was an RFP that we were hoping had gone out already, and I'd like to understand if that is the case or is not the case.
I think we can take five minutes on that, it'll be a short one.
Great.
Okay, all those in favor of the agenda with the changes as listed, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Agenda carries, first item on the agenda, public comment. Christine, you want to tee us up?
Yep. Anybody from the public who would like to speak, raise your hand, and you'll have three minutes to speak. I'll call you in the order that you raise your hand. So who would like to speak? Okay, Krista, go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to comment on some of the discussion that just occurred. This is a $249 million project. That means a lot to a lot of people in this state. And the staff has worked really hard to incorporate public comments and to make the best possible volume two submission. This is not just a step in the process. This is one of the most important steps in the process. So I think even if it takes the time that you have during the meeting to read those red lines and understand what you're voting on, I think it's really critical that every single person vote and that there not be an abstention, because I think that's a, I think that that's not a, not what we want to see when we're putting forward something to the NTIA. Thanks.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Okay, not seeing any. I think we can move on.
Okay, thank you very much, and Krista, thank you for your comment. Item three on the agenda is approval of the September 11th meeting minutes. I am going to recommend we table the meeting minutes. I have questions on the minutes that don't, they don't appear to reflect exactly what was discussed, so I'd like to take that offline to Christine. Christine, you and I can talk after at some point in the next week to talk about the minute, meeting minutes.
Yeah, we'll include Chance in that discussion as well, because he saw the minutes, so.
Are there any objections to that action?
No.
Okay. Okay, let's move then to item four, which is approval of the bead initial proposed volume two. And if there are any changes in material that were sent out yesterday, we would like staff to go over those with us directly.
Okay, Lucy, well, Lucy Rogers will lead this discussion. Go ahead, Lucy.
Okay, um, thank you, yes. So the final version was sent out last Wednesday in the board packet. As Christine mentioned, last night, there was a technical corrections red line version sent out. This, as you can imagine, with a hun, over 100-page report, after we released it, we had a number of partners come back to us with technical corrections that they had noticed, which we greatly appreciated. It's always good to have as many kind of sharp and careful eyes as possible. I think these corrections could have been corrections that we made and just submitted to the NTIA, but it was important to us to make sure that, you know, the board was seeing exactly the word-for-word language that we submitted. So that is the source of these technical corrections. I apologize for any confusion. I, I had considered, you know, that it might be more simple to just make the technical corrections, but it felt really, really important to me that what was voted on today was word-for-word what got submitted to the NTIA. And so that is the reason why that was sent out, and I apologize for confusion that it caused. So Patty, a second.
Lucy, are you able to go through what the technical correction, so that, that would be beautiful, and I think that would give us a lot of assurance and allow us to vote.
With the exception of some typos that I'm not going to go through, there were just a few kind of wording changes. So the first one is on page 35 of the red line. That basically there was an inconsistency throughout the report where, which I think had happened through a number of different versions, where at certain times we were saying that that proposals needed to include every unserved and every underserved address, and then at certain times we were saying proposals needed to include every unserved address and as many underserved as possible. And so we went through and made sure it was consistent in every place that proposals need to include every unserved and underserved address. And then VCBB has the ability to negotiate out underserved addresses on the backend as needed to ultimately get to being sure that at a minimum, every unserved address is served. So that, that was a kind of a consistency issue. It said it in a number of places, but then there were a number of places where it wasn't clear. So we made that consistent. And then going on, the next change was on.
Lucy, the.
Yep.
Make sure I got this right. On page 35 of the red line version, you're adding next to, in the first paragraph, next to unserved, adding the word and underserved. And you've done that throughout the document?
Correct, yep. So on page 35, you can see where it's crossed out. We had previously said unserved and as many underserved locations as possible, so we're changing it to be all unserved and underserved, which is what it, it was, it was an inconsistency. That was what we had said elsewhere. And it was inconsistent with what it said there. And so, um.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
So we, and there's a few places where we made that consistent. The next change is on, on page 64. Another inconsistency, it said sub-grantee proposals would be submitted via email or mail, whereas elsewhere in the document, we had said via an online grant portal. We changed that to be via an online grant portal, which is consistent with the current way that we receive applications from, for the Act 71 grants. Um, then there's a couple places where we added the word as applicable or the words as applicable to make sure we're kind of covering all of the possible types of sub-grantees we might get. So one example is on page 65. It's, we added as applicable to relate to network construction staff. Not all prospective sub-grantees have in-house network construction staff, so we obviously would not require resumes from network construction staff if they are not employed by the prospective sub-grantee. So this is kind of, I'll go through all of them one by one, but this gives you a sense of kind of the nature of the corrections that were made to make sure that we were dotting all our i's and crossing all our t's. Um, on page 82, this, these are kind of of a similar nature to adding the as applicable. This is related to the fact that some prospective sub-grantees may have a process they're required to follow for selecting their subcontractors that might prohibit them from having fully selected the subcontractors prior to applying for bead funds. And so this is to make it a bit more inclusive, that we kind of are requiring a lot of information about subcontractors or requiring the information about how, detailed information about how those subcontractors will be chosen through the, the process that is used by the prospective sub-grantee to select subcontractors. Um.
Lucy?
Yes.
Just read that sentence that's highlighted on 82. The entities that the proposed sub-grantee plans to contract and subcontract within carrying out the proposed, is that within as one word?
Um, it's, it's, it's a little weirdly written, but it's the entities that the proposed sub-grantee plans to contract and subcontract with in carrying out the proposed work. It should be the entities with which the proposed sub-grantees, we can make that change. Um, okay, then on page 84, we added, we became aware of another list available in the state of Vermont of a, another resource to use in finding and listing women-owned businesses. And so we added that to the list to make sure that we were being inclusive of the resources available. On page 90, we received the recommendation to more correctly cite where our preference, the state preference for fiber is outlined, so we add, we referenced the 10-year telecom plan and added a link to that plan. On page 94, we, um, we received feedback to be more specific about what it would look like to not, to fulfill the low-cost requirement with a plan that was between $45 and $75 per month, as opposed to directly at $45 per month. So we made the language more clear and specific by saying, at VCBB's discretion, prospective sub-grantees may also fulfill the low-cost service plan requirement with a low-cost broadband service option at higher than $45 per month, but not to exceed $75 per month by demonstrating to the VCBB in the proposal, the reasonable necessity for the higher costs and the efforts taken to first attempt to meet the $45 per month plan prior to presenting a higher cost plan.
Can you, can you explain who the, what the applicant would do if they had a $30 a month plan?
A $30 a month, per month plan would be permissible as a low-cost option.
At higher.
Uh, it's, in the paragraph before, it says.
It's, so the operative word here is may also, okay.
Yeah, so the paragraph, the sentence before that paragraph says, it specifically speaks to this, which says prospective sub-grantees that offer the low-cost service plan at or below $45 per month will automatically fulfill the requirement. And then they may fulfill it between 45 to 75 at VCBB's discretion.
I just wanted to make sure we hadn't canceled it out, okay?
Nope. Okay.
So I want to take, I want to take a second to digest that, because I'm, I'm trying to catch up and read that. Where, where is the ability to come in lower than 45? What paragraph of what?
So, so if you see the sentence I just read that says at the VCBB's discretion, um, which is the first full paragraph on page 94, the sentence directly before that, at the end of the previous paragraph, says, prospective sub-grantees that offer the low-cost service plan at or below 45 will automatically fulfill this requirement and be eligible to enter the scoring pa, phase. And then this paragraph begins, prospective sub-grantees may also fulfill the requirement through an option between 45 to 75, which would be if they did not have an option at or below 45.
Thank you very much. Now I see the whole thread. Appreciate it.
No, good, good question. It's, it's kind of hard to, I think that paragraph, out of context, is a little hard to.
This is a great, that's a great, thank you for the wording on this. You've addressed that issue very well.
And I actually, I want to thank the, the Commissioner June Tierney helped with, with the wording there, kind of bringing her experience in. Okay.
This question, after the red line, the VCBB, for example, would expect to show in it overall rurality? I'm just not familiar with that use of rural. Is that a thing? What does it mean?
Um, so I think it would be how rural the district is, population density, and any geographic factors.
Okay, if you say so.
We've learned a new word today.
Um, page 97.
I actually, I actually wonder whether you wouldn't like to put geographic, you know, over, overall rurality? I can't say it. Geography and low, I mean, do you want to call it, it could be over the mountain, and that's really not a factor of ruralness.
I know morality is a word used in the US Census. I would be happy to change it to geographic factors if that would be preferable. But it is, you know, it is a kind of established.
I'm, I'm believing you that morality is something that I just don't know about. It's not that the world doesn't know about it. I'm wondering if you should be saying something, what I'm worried about now that we have this discretion is that there's no real standards for it. So, so that's why I was wondering about, you know.
I think the word is fine, set up, and it, based on the definition of the word online, it, I think it's fine.
Okay.
Anybody else have thought?
Yeah, thoughts on that page?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Thank you.
Um, Patty, should I keep going?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so on page 96, 97, the change is to, um, take out the, this is in the part of the plan where we talk about the initial 20% use of funds, and I think we received the, the reasonable feedback that we shouldn't really, anywhere in the plan, be kind of putting out numbers of how much we expect certain areas to be bid in for, because the entire kind of nature of how this program is, is set up is that it's not block grant, and it's not certain amounts of money allocated to different parts of the state. So we changed that paragraph, it's a paragraph split between page 96 and 97, to just take out any reference to how much we expect those bids to come in for and, and to just make the point we need to make to the NTIA, which is that we, we are requesting the full 20% upfront, because we expect we'll use the full 20% in those, in those areas. Um, moving on, actually, I think that might be the last one. So that, those are the, the red line changes. Again, they were, they were changes that, that came to us after the publishing of the final report. And I think, you know, we're helpful, we're mostly technical in nature, but it felt important to at least kind of be putting the, the final language in front of everyone for a vote. So apologies on, on the timing there.
Thank you for taking the time to go through that in the detail, because that just makes our life easier to vote on this.
Yeah, totally understand that.
Thank you. Christine, anything else? On the bead?
No, I think you can move to vote.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to approve, and we can open it up for discussion. I move that we approve the Vermont Community Broadband Board, Vermont's Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Initial Proposal, Volume Two document, as presented to us in red line format. I'm also going to include in the motion that any non-substantive changes, for example, if you find a typo, staff is allowed to make that change before submission. So substantially in the content as provided, and allow staff, in the event there's any typos, to make those corrections. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dan. Discussion. Right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
Does Laura want to vote?
Hi, sorry, I thought, I was, I thought I was not muted. Aye.
Thank you. Very good, but unanimous vote, thank you, passes. Congratulations, staff. A lot of work went into this. Compliment everybody that had a hand in it, hand in it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I want to thank you all for your work throughout this as well. I think it's a exciting milestone to be at with a lot of work left to do, but certainly an exciting place to be at as VCBB and as the state, so thank you.
Yes.
Yep.
Congratulations.
I'm going to extend my thanks as well to the staff for all the hard work on this. It's definitely been a lot of hours.
Okay, let's move on to digital equity plan.
Yeah, the, sure. We're, the digital equity plan, we have a draft plan that's going out for public comment on December 1st. As, you know, as, as our agreement with the board, we would keep you informed all along the way. We're, we're presenting this to you. Remember, it's in very draft and proposed form. You have plenty of time to provide additional input beyond this meeting, and, and feel free to go, you know, provide deep, take a deep dive into the plan after this meeting and provide additional feedback. But you'll have a chance to review it before it gets submitted as well. And I'll turn this over to Brittany to do the introduction to the plan and do a presentation on what's involved.
Right. Can everyone see my screen?
Yep.
Perfect. Okay. So, good morning, everyone. It's nice to see everyone today and really excited for all the effort, and just wanted to echo that for the bead work. So as a reminder, I'm Brittany Watson, the Digital Equity Officer. And so as we begin, it's important to acknowledge, I think it's important to acknowledge the incredibly hard work that's, and dedication that's gone into this first draft of the digital equity plan. Huge thank you to Vernonburg Group and the VCBB team. We're off to a really great start with this plan, and I am looking forward to continue this work. So I also want to highlight and just keep reiterating that the digital equity plan is a working document. Changes are being made ongoing. So today, I'll be highlighting key components of the digital equity plan. With the amount of experience, expertise, and commitment in this space, I really look forward to your input. I'll be presenting on the needs and barriers, the goals, and how the goals and barriers link VCBB's role. I'll be presenting on the goals and activities, and for this particular part of the presentation, I want to quickly note. I uh, want to quickly note that the slides for goals and activities will include the goal, objectives and core activities. Um, I'll be focusing on the goal and the activities, uh, core activities today. So you'll be receiving the digital equity draft um, later today. So then I, you know, taking that time, I I encourage you to take that time to um, take a deeper look into the objectives um, and provide your feedback after reviewing the plan in its entirety. So we'll go, we'll also be going over uh, alignment with existing priorities, collaboration and partnerships, timeline, monitoring and evaluation, accountability, um, funding and sustainability and stakeholder engagement. We have used uh, multiple qualitative and quantitative data gathering uh, methods, which include surveys, polls. Using nationwide data and research, focus groups, uh, listening sessions and interviews. Um, in our efforts, we've identified Vermont's main barriers to digital equity. Um, that not all Vermonters can have broadband in their home. Um, some Vermonters that can have broadband in their home can't afford it. Uh, we have Vermonters that don't have devices to meet their needs and Vermonters that either don't use the resources in our state um, due to lack of knowledge or lack of trust in resources. Um, and we have uh, Vermonters that do not see the value of broadband and Vermonters uh, that do not have the skills or confidence to use the internet safely, uh, meaningfully and or uh, productively. What we found in our data collection is that each of these barriers has an associated need. Um, and these barriers are shared amongst multiple covered populations in our state. So the associated needs inform the drafting of our goals. Um, some pertinent information that our data will significantly um, shape our work is that making broadband affordable is essential. Having digital scaling resources is going to be critical and getting Vermonters online safely and meaningfully. And establishing an effective and um, efficient way to provide devices is necessary to reach our vision of digital equity in Vermont. Here's a bar graph showing the Vermont's covered population as percentages. So our covered population uh, percentages in descending order by percent of total population are rural, uh, the rural population, aging population, covered households, differently able or identifying with a disability, having a language barrier, um, racial or ethnic minority, veteran and incarcerated. We have uh, six goals for the digital equity plan. These goals are in sync with the bead plan. And all that we talk about today, um, I want to emphasize my desire for your input on um, this part of the digital equity plan. I think a major part of this work is focused here uh, within the goals. Um, we are uh, going to detail, uh, going into detail for each of these goals. Um, later in a few moments. Um, so just wanting to, I'll just highlight for you all. Um, please analyze each goal for how realistic and achievable they are. Um, and you know, wanting to state here, uh, it's really important to the V C B B team that we're drafting a plan that we can be um, we can really deliver on for Denmark, for Vermont. So as I mentioned earlier, what we've found for our state is that uh, our main barriers each have an associated need or goal. Uh, this is a helpful visual of connecting the barrier or need to the goal that will uh, meet or address it. This slide also captures how um, interconnected this work is, as well as how important a multidisciplinary approach to advancing digital equity in Vermont is. While I'm leading the digital equity work, it's important to note that the V C B B team holds collective responsibility and commitment to achieving this work. Um, our role is to set the vision and strategy for advancing digital equity. Continue conversations and opportunity for deeper learning and collaboration amongst stakeholders. Uh, fund initiatives that align with our goals and meet our objectives. Collect all of our data on digital equity, analyze the collected data and share it. Uh, help and empower other entities to focus on um, and work to advance digital equity and share digital equity related resources. Now in going into each of our uh, goals and activities, goal one. Mobilize resources for end to end broadband infrastructure deployments to all unserved and underserved locations and community anchor institutions. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I wrote that. Oh, yeah, um, in Vermont, yes. So this goal addresses the barrier of broadband availability and benefits all covered populations. Core activities for this goal are pursuing additional funding sources to supplement the bead and digital equity programs. Um, support uh, communication union districts, um, internet service providers and others to pursue funding opportunities and work with community partners. Um, and I S P's to install equipment to enable wifi signals outside buildings. Uh, people experiencing housing insecurity go too often.
Brittany, can I ask a question about goal number one?
Yes.
Um, it it, forgive me if this is someplace else or embedded in a different way, but you say end to end service. We have a big affordability barrier in the cost of um, drops or deployment to the actual um, residential location of particularly low income households. How are, how are you seeing that issue addressed in this wording? I mean, I'm I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that it it maybe it becomes a programmatic requirement that gets delivered on later in this process. But does it, it is it inherent in the subject, in these objectives?
Okay, I'm just trying, um, so your question, if I, if I'm understanding correctly, um, how am I seeing the issue of um, the affordability barrier being addressed in particularly residential look?
So, so maybe this says all we need to say in bullet point number two.
Hmm.
Um, broadband infrastructure deployments to extend a hundred square or better connectivity to all on on grid, unserved and underserved locations. That what I'm worried about is this idea of access. Trump, you know, where access just means it goes by the door, trumping actual delivery to the um, location.
Yeah, uh, let me take a stab at that and then Lucy White or Alex from uh, Vernonburg can add. We, this is uh, your input, this is the input stage. Um, your question is, uh, we have, this is being discussed both nationally, you know, with the state broadband leaders as well as us and how to, how to address this issue. But I believe what you're asking Holly specifically is related to, I think you said it, the cost drops, right? If it, you know, we could, we can pass a home, but if it, and it's particularly uh, improve uh, as an issue in manufactured home communities. Uh, whereas as, you know, it could be expensive to, with those communities to dig up the, dig it up and get, get there. But that is a concern, that is something we are considering, but but you know, we don't have an answer. That's exactly what this plan is all about. But uh, Alex, yeah, go ahead.
So Christine, my only, my, my, it does say here to all on grid, unserved and underserved locations. So actually, it should mean, you know, right to the user equipment, right?
Yes, I think that's a good point. Um, yeah, that's, that's a good catch, Holly.
In my, in my, in my world, I would love to have an objective that says including, you know, user, user equipment as it's necessary, but I, I or, you know, drops to the door as necessary. But I'll settle for this as long as we all understand that you can't have affordability or digital equity unless you've got a plan for that. Sorry for the sound.
And I, and I will say, we will make sure there's language of the plan, uh, because that, that, that is our intent.
And and if you don't mind me just interjecting quickly, Christine, Holly, I think that's a great point. Um, it's something that we've been talking about a lot with the V C B B internally is a way to fund non standard drops. Or if there needs to be some sort of stopgap funding available for places where the cost to get from the, the road to the door is too expensive. I think one of the barriers to doing that right now, especially through digital equity, is that Vermont still doesn't know what its allocation of funding will be for its digital equity capacity grant program. So we have to think about what is reasonable and sustainable kind of in the context of the actual amount of money that's available and we just don't know that yet from N T I A. And they haven't told us exactly when that's going to be unfortunately, but hopefully it will be soon.
Okay, Dan, Dan had, this is hand raised.
Um, I, I don't want to stop this conversation. Holly has more to say on this part. I have a separate comment. Go to Holly.
I do have more, I do have more to say, and it's this, because highlights of core activities has a specific call out for wifi signals outside buildings, which is the worst possible solution for broadband connectivity in the universe. Because we've already seen the going to school from your car scenario, et cetera. If you're going to have specific call outs like that, I would like to recommend that you consider putting in a call out for reserving a portion of grant funds for non standard drops or or um, high cost delivery.
Absolutely. I think that's something we can definitely do. Holly, that's good feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Dan, I think you're, you're on.
Dan.
Yeah, so just a, a, a goal of finding an anchor institution in every town. I think it's not feasible. Um, and and grouping towns maybe when I think of, there's two hundred and seventy seven towns, some of, many of those. I think there's uh, four or five, six, they don't have community centers. They don't have really, uh, they're like less than a hundred residents in the area. Is there a way to rephrase that so that that goal can be uh, achievable? Um, by grouping neighboring area, I I'm not sure what the words would be, but I don't think it's achievable or reasonable, given some of the reality of, you'll be use that.
Yeah, Alex, maybe you could, Alex, maybe you could take that one. It's a, there is a, a requirement in the bead. Uh, the, there is specific requirement that we address community anchor institutions, but Alice, let's, let's take that.
Sure, Christine. Yeah, so Dan, I think that's good feedback. Thank you. So Vermont, so yes, Christine is correct in that bead. Um, requires, so there's obviously the three parts of bead, there's serve, the unserved, serve, the underserved, and then serve all C A I's with gigabit speeds. So there's that piece to it. One thing I would say is that Vermont was very intentional and has actually gone to bat with the N T I A a little bit about adding categories of C A I's, which was an effort to ensure that most, if not all, communities would have a C A I location present in them. So that's why, for example, we included general stores on our list of C A I's in locations that don't have um, those community centers and gathering places that you talked about, Dan, and where the general stores fill that role. That was really important to uh, the V C B B because they wanted to make sure that each locate, each community felt that there was a place that they could go and gather and connect. Um, in a kind of sustainable and high capacity way. And so that was the intent behind the categories of C A I's that Vermont added to the initial list provided by N T I A. Uh, I agree with you that it is going to be challenging to uh, reach all of those C A I's with the available funding. And so that's another reason why we're looking to pursue additional funding sources as part of the core activities here is to make sure that that goal is within the realm of reasonable in the kind of longer term. And and the digital equity plan includes uh, ten year goals, so we go beyond the five. And so in the longer term, finding that those funding sources and making sure that, that, that goal, which is kind of a high threshold, high bar goal is, it becomes more in the realm of achievable, hopefully.
Okay, well, if you're picking up the hundred residents that are in that community, making a community anchor institution may not be necessary. But you get the point. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah. And maybe there's a way that we can be a little more precise with the language or think about a, maybe a different term than towns that might be a little more, more realistic or or less kind of capturing of those super small, super rural places where it really is not something that necessarily makes sense. We'll think about that and take that back.
Excellent. Good point, Dan.
Okay, back to Brittany.
Thanks, thank you. Okay. Goal two, ensure sustainable, community driven solutions across the entire state. This goal addresses the barriers of broadband availability and affordability, device access, relevance and digital literacy, and it benefits all covered populations. Core activities for this goal um, are continuing to engage stakeholders and um, a system for, like, developing a system for public feedback on the digital equity process. Um, establishing a digital navigators program, establishing a train, the trainer model uh, that will assist uh, other state agencies and um, non governmental organizations to focus on digital equity. Um, and publish and share digital equity resources uh, with the public and um, community anchor institutions. Uh, establish a device loaning program uh, for Vermonters to be able to check out or in devices or technology. I'll pause if anyone has any comments on this slide before going to the next one.
I.
Yep, go ahead, Holly.
I, you know, I don't know how, whether you want to actually have a live conversation about each of these goals now or whether you would just as soon um, get comments from us or, you know, December first is right around the corner, actually. So I'm very concerned about how this is supposed to work, but I, I'm worried about if I'm going to, if you want to take comments now. I'm very worried about assist, uh, bullet one, two, three, four, assist communities with strategies and resources to ensure broadband affordability. I, it's, the communities can't deliver broadband affordability. The providers can deliver broadband affordability. The providers can deliver broadband affordability. And so I want to make sure that we're, I, I don't know what that means really, but I want to make sure that we keep the, the effort and the focus on the deliverer of the services.
So I will say for the goals, um, I, I, I recognize that you'll be receiving the, the digital equity plan and you'll, you'll have an opportunity to provide you know, more detailed feedback and, and have, have time to really sit with the content. In this space, I, I just, you know, not necessarily that I'm, I'm expecting. You know, I guess, uh, I, I want to open it up so that you, if there's any like immediate or, um, you know, kind of like initial reaction to, to the goals that we're identifying, you know, that you're, you're having the opportunity to be able to speak to, speak to that in this space. So I think that it's, it's helpful and even just for others to, to be hearing that, going into reviewing the plan later.
Yeah. And, and I'll add too that, you know, your comment, your, your comments and concerns about affordability. We really need to, to address that separately. That's a, that's a big, a big challenging issue from both, you know, how, how we address it at the state, you know, which, how we, how we address it from a provider's standpoint, you know, and how we provide support. Uh, they're all intertwined. So I, I think, you know, I know we have an affordability uh, committee set up with the board, but we're definitely looking for direction, uh, well, I should say, we're looking to come to a conclusion on this. And we'll lead you then as part of this, but I know that's a separate item for the board. And, and uh, Holly, that's a important point you made for sure.
Well, I, I almost think that our goal should be to identify best practices for, for, this is about solutions. So, so the solutions are kind of a broad target, but best, best practices and share them out in the community for affordability, equity and skilling. I mean, you know, like it, it doesn't have to be divided in so fine, in such, to such a fine, in, in, in fine lines. There's almost too many objectives.
Yeah. And I guess I'll kick that over to Alex again. Alex, you know, this is around what do we need to do to meet the, you know, to, there's a kind of like, we, you know, we gotta, we've got to meet the requirements of, of the grant program as defined by the NTIA. But at the same time, we have to make it practical. What are, what are your thoughts on that, Alex?
Yeah. And, and the other challenge is making the goals sufficiently broad and, and malleable, Holly, and adaptable to your point, while also making them specific enough to be kind of actionable and achievable. I think in this case, this objective actually is probably, probably unnecessarily duplicative with an objective that's in goal number three, which is about, which is the goal that's focused entirely on device affordability and service affordability. So I'm thinking that it probably would make sense, Holly, to your point, to just cut that bullet and focus on the provision of best practices and like information about existing resources and the dissemination of those within communities uh, versus the, the, this, this uh, objective applying it to this goal. So I think that's really good feedback.
Yeah, same thing for the activities.
Christine, this is Patty. Can we pull up for a second and remind me of some, just some administrative details here? This has to be filed by December 1st. Is that accurate?
No, no, we're, it's just, it's going to public comment December 1st. We actually don't file it. We don't file it to, to, I think the end, when do we file it, Brittany, with the NTIA?
In February.
Yeah. So you have plenty of time.
We have plenty of time. Okay. So you're not ax- asking for action today.
No, we're not actually. Actually, what's happening right now is exactly what we're looking for in dialogue.
This is, it's just important to make sure we're all on the same page in terms of understanding what, what the life of this document is. Obviously you all on staff have a firm grip of it because you're dealing with the day-to-day. If you can go over a high level, how this report's going to be used, a little bit on timing, all that kind of stuff, just to keep us grounded, because I think that helps to make sure that we've got, to know that we've got time. Do you feedback on this and digest it a little bit would be helpful.
Yeah, you want to take that, Brit? Yeah. Take that, Brittany.
Yeah, we, um, the last board meeting, we, we provided like a high level of, of the content of the document for the digital equity and laid out the timeline for like upcoming important dates.
Yeah, it's just always good for your audiences grounded in terms of how it's going to be used and make sure we understand kind of our role in the process. So I'm just asking for a short, you know, minute or two-minute recap.
Okay. So with the digital equity plan, what we're looking at is we're high level identifying what the, um, in the work that we've done with data collection, meeting with Vermonters throughout the state, engaging them in different ways of like interviews, listening sessions, focus groups, surveys. And taking that information to inform the digital equity plan. So with all of that work, we were able to identify the barriers that are most common in Vermont. And so, and we already knew kind of like going into it based on what we've, um, the, what we've received as like guidance from the NTIA and the NDIA, that there were going to be main barriers around like affordability, accessibility and digital skilling. And so then in our work and receiving input from Vermonters, we've been able to both confirm that and then also further inform what that really looks like for Vermonters. And, and so then that's what I, I mentioned earlier today, even with the that Vermonters are, um, there's a struggle with whether or not they have broadband available in their homes. How, whether or not they can afford broadband. And if they have the devices that they need to be able to meet their needs and what they would need to access the internet for. And if they have the skills to feel confident in their ability to navigate the internet safely. And we're, we're looking in the plan, you'll see that we also talk about, we go into depth a little bit about each of the covered populations. There's eight covered populations. For, that we need to focus on per the NTIA for digital equity. And in each of those populations, what we're acknowledging today and what, and previously that we're seeing is that we need to get more granular. So we need to have more details on the specific covered populations so that we're tailoring our digital equity plan to meet the needs of each covered population and, and their unique presenting needs and meeting their unique presenting needs.
Yeah.
Define the covered populations or is that something we are defined?
Yeah, let me just, before we go further, let me just go for a high level and down. You, you heard the detail, but, and I think I'll answer your question, um, Patty. So you know, that as, as part of the requirement to get the 229 million, the, we, we're required to have an equity plan. The equity plan is, and there's a template that's been set up by the NTIA. So when you hear about these things that we are doing, these are all defined by the template. So we're, and this gets submitted, you know, we have a, a federal program officer, Clay Purvis, who we work with. But ultimately, once, you know, and he gives us advice on how we're, how we're complying with what he believes the plan, uh, that the NTIA requires. Then this plan actually goes to a separate reviewer when we submit it. That reviewer is part of the NIST, uh, NIST finally gets the final say in it. So it goes through a couple of levels to ensure that we're following the template.
Okay. Does that, yeah.
That's very helpful.
Do you mind if I just jump in Patty and just so to your point about covered populations? There was, so there's actually, and then just a couple of other smaller things. So Christine is right that an equity plan is a requirement of bead. It's also a requirement of the separate digital equity program, which is a, its own thing, they're complementary programs. But more money is coming available to Vermont through the digital equity program, which is this plan is a deliverable for. So this plan, the structure of it and what's included was dictated by NTIA. It really is designed to express Vermont's vision for digital equity, the strategy that it plans to employ in implementing the digital equity plan and the needs and barriers identified for Vermont's population in general and covered populations in particular. And then what happens subsequent to this is Vermont develops its implementation strategy and develops the specific partnerships that, that the VCBB will kind of engage in order to accomplish the implementation strat, the implementation plan that's laid out here and its goals. So that's kind of what the, the goals, the high level goal and the expectations of this document are. And Christine is right that it's a requirement for both bead and then the separate DEA program that is coming. And where, that's the one where we don't know the exact funding allocation, but that hopefully, hopefully should be coming soon.
Thank you. That is very helpful.
I just missed the part of the DEA. What, what does DEA stand for?
Sorry, Holly. Did you, I, I speak in acronyms now because this has become my life. Digital Equity Act. So that's the, the act that funded the digital equity program.
Yeah, I just thought maybe it was yet another thing.
Not, no, no, not a new one.
Okay. So, so um, did I understand you correctly, Alex, that you're trying to identify the specific groups that you'll be, I mean, it made, you made it sound like you have to identify who you'd partner with.
No, no. So that's, I actually, I'm sorry, I wasn't totally clear in what I just expressed. That is exact, actually not what we're doing. So this plan includes a partnership strategy and how Vermont will approach partnerships, but not like we're going to partner with X organization to do X thing, and this is what the program's going to look like. That comes later.
So my overarching feedback on this, and it looks like it was bucket loads of work, is that there's a lot of in this line of work, there's a, a great capacity for speaking in general terms and generally known terms, and then saying the same thing kind of over and over again in slightly different ways. And I urge you to, to actually make goals, goals, like we want to do X by Y. And, um, and make the core activities categorical as possible, still meeting the NTIA's objectives, so that we don't just generate a massive laundry list of stuff that we can't possibly accomplish in that gray and newer detail.
Thank you.
Thanks, Holly.
I, 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 and I say that with all appreciation for how much work is in, in this document.
Okay. Okay, Brittany, I think back to you.
Well, three, ensure high-speed broadband services and devices are affordable. This goal addresses the barriers of broadband availability, affordability and device access and benefits all covered populations. Core activities for this goal is to work with the Department for Education to design and implement a device access program. Have a way ideally, like a hotline, either newly established or adding to an existing resource hotline for Vermonters so that Vermonters can learn about and get connected to digital equity resources and potentially engage with state policymakers to develop additional state-level affordability programs.
And all of that that you're saying there, Brittany, that's not written here. It, it, but it's the definition of what the, the goal means, right?
Uh, what I just said, I, were the highlights of the core activities.
So an example of what I've been talking about in kind of general terms is this last objective bullet, assist communities with strategies and resources to ensure affordability. Yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, we're, we're on, we're on notice to
Okay.
Yeah, address that, change, chase that as, as we discussed previously. Is that what you're addressing, Holly? Yep, okay. Yep.
There is something, Brittany, that happens in talking to people who have decided that broadband is too expensive, that is about education and educating people about the economics of access. I, I don't know if that is addressed here, but it's not actually a community strategy. It's an education strategy that has to be held by an institution. So it's really important. I don't know if it's, if I, I'm not seeing it so far.
Yeah, I agree with you that it's important. Oh, go ahead. Sorry, Christine.
Well, I just want to make sure that we all understand what you mean by economics of access. Do you understand what that means, Brittany?
Economics of access.
How, how.
Here's what, here's what I mean. Just you don't have to say whether you understand or not, tell you what I think it means. Many households don't understand that broadband can be used for the equivalent of television. So they maintain, I, we went through this room, tried to get service to mobile housing. I can't hook up to the broadband because I don't want to cut my cable service. I can't hook, I can't connect to the, to the broadband because I, you know, have to have this other service for my employer. And they, and there are ways to look at family income to try to strategize how to make broadband, robust broadband service meet multiple needs for the family and therefore cut down the costs, including gas to go see your doctor. So, so that, um, so that education about the household economics of access is a whole topic that I hope will be reflected here.
Yeah, I, I do believe that there's, we intend to have an education component, and that's going to be part of also like our digital navigator program, which I believe will be in one of the goals that we haven't yet discussed. But basically even, you know, in thinking about that, I, to your point, Holly, I definitely agree. There is, um, in, in thinking about the Vermonters that are uncertain about how broadband can benefit them. There's, you know, and as we're, you know, thinking about working potentially with state policymakers, being able to draw the connection to the economic value of broadband from a socioeconomic standpoint is going to be important. And I think that part of our intent at VCBB and, and creating a holistic approach is to recognize that.
Okay. Thanks. Uh, go ahead, Brittany.
Okay, thanks. Well, four, enhance workforce development for broadband and the digital economy. So goal four addresses broadband availability, affordability and digital literacy and benefits all covered populations. Core activities within this goal are to work with the Department of Corrections, develop trainings for incarcerated individuals. Continue to support the design and implementation of apprenticeship and job training programs in collaboration with the Department for Labor and potential employers. Work with employers and workforce development partners to define, document, publish and share career roadmaps to show long-term opportunities for people entering or re-entering the workforce. And to your point, Holly, that you made about the training or the education component, this is another like opportunity where we can fit that in. And some of this, as I mentioned before, may look different as we are starting to tailor to specific covered populations and what their needs are. And while there are going to be some general education, right, that will cover all throughout the state, all Vermonters, I think there's going to be some pieces that are specific, right? Some education pieces that are specific to some of the covered populations.
Well, not to be contrary, but this is the issue for me. I see that education as an affordability piece. Like who's responsible for how much it costs is one side of it. And how can we get strategies for making it affordable is another side of it. Whether workforce development has anything to do with household economics is not clear to me. So I'm just trying to say, I'm trying to peg where I think this fits in. And that's where I'm looking for, making sure we don't speak in buzzwords. We set some really clear objectives.
Yeah, Holly, if I could weigh it, I'd love Alex to, because I think, again, you make a, you know, a very good point that I personally did not see till you brought it up. So Alex, when we talk about workforce development objective.
Yeah.
Speak a little more to that.
I think, Holly, I think there are multiple dimensions of education that we're talking about. And I will, I will say, I didn't think about the education on economics aspect of it when we were discussing the affordability goal. And I think it would be totally legitimate to add an objective that's focused on kind of education around the potential benefits and uses of broadband and ways that it can improve kind of household economics. And then I think separately, there's a conversation to be had on workforce related to what kind of remote work opportunities does the expanded access to broadband and improved digital equity create? What, when you are re-entering the workforce, when you're kind of, if you are employed in the broadband ecosystem, what, how that can drive kind of improved broadband access at your own home? So like, you know, affordability for folks improves when folks get better paying, more sustainable jobs, right? And that we're hoping and planning for as part of this digital equity and BEAD effort for that to happen through kind of the expanded access to broadband, you know, both within the deployment kind of sphere of workforce development and the people who are actually going to be working laying the lines. And then with additional economic opportunity that's created by kind of broader access to broadband, which you've seen play out kind of nationally. There's a lot of evidence to support kind of improved economic outcomes as connectivity improves. So I think there are multiple educational dimensions. And I think it's important to Holly's point that we reference them in the sections where they're appropriate to make it clear that we're addressing each of those different educational components. Hopefully that was helpful. And that was a really good point, Holly. Thank you. And, you know, if you have suggestions or thoughts on what you think is important in terms of that education or what you think it could look like, please do feel, I mean, obviously you know that the VCBB staff is always available to you, but feel free to reach out to me or anybody at Vernonburg as well if you wanted to share those thoughts.
Thank you.
This is Patty jumping in. Just, you know, taking off on Holly's comment about some of the specifics and the core activities. For example, in the section in four, you've highlighted in the very first bullet, work with Department of Corrections, corporate training opportunities, et cetera. So you're identifying one of the disadvantaged groups, but not, here you're not listing all of them. And it seems, I don't know, it doesn't seem fair to emphasize one group over another. So making that more of a generality in terms of incorporate training opportunities for all groups that we've identified and not just incarcerated, but all the groups somehow would be helpful. Make it more general than specific. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yes, that makes sense.
Okay. I think, did you skip goal five intentionally?
You're muted, Brittany.
Sorry about that. I don't know how that happened. Let me go back into here. Okay, everyone can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Core activities for goal five are help with public-private partnerships on vocational rehabilitation, work to build and/or improve programs that recruit and scale Vermonters from covered populations, develop and promote digital scaling resources focused on in-demand job skills, support community anchor institutions to develop or expand programs and resources to increase the use of digital access for socioeconomic mobility. Anything on that? So we will go on to goal six. Goal six is to advance digital literacy and accessibility for all Vermonters, both during the BEAD performance period and into the future. This goal addresses relevance, digital literacy and accessibility and benefits all covered populations. Core activities for this goal are audit and evaluate Vermont State Public Services for accessibility inclusivity, design and implement a grant program for community organizations to upgrade their websites, materials and online services to ensure accessibility, establish a system to ensure accessibility and establish a system to direct Vermonters who are members of a covered population to a hired digital navigator.
Yeah, I think I've been adding something at this point to Curz. I think it addresses Patty's thing to bring from a high level. From a high level, there are two funding sources that we will be accessing as part of this plan. One is a direct block grant to the state, and then the other is a competitive program. So the NTI program includes $1.44 billion. That would be a direct, available nationally, that was available as direct block to the states. And then a $1.25 billion program that is a competitive program. So when you look at this thing about, you know, creating, this address is right here about we'll be supporting organizations in the state to apply for competitive block programs.
Christine, how much of those funds would be eligible for Vermont?
Well, I can only tell you that this has been, you know, we keep getting told that we don't have a formula. We don't have a formula. But if you were going to use a, then of course we hear rumors there is a formula, there is a formula. So it's not been made clear to us with numbers. But if we were to take the same formula that was used for the allocation of the $42.5 billion, then there would be 12.4 million available in block programs and about 10 billion for competitive programs, just to give you the size of it. But definitely do not, that's, you know, that's all our own speculation. The NTI has not said anything.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
So I'm just going to make a little footnote here, Brittany. There's lots of expectation for digital navigators placed in this document. And you should think through whether, when we talk about digital navigators, whether we're thinking about just those folks at the CAP agencies, the community action agencies, who are specifically trained for this purpose, in which case they are going to be some busy, or whether we're looking to identify digital navigators within communities, kind of like we're looking to identify CIs within communities. And I just hope you'll hold that thought in mind as you look through this again. You know, like librarians are natural digital navigators, providing that we have some consistency in how they're trained and interfacing with the public. So that's my thought.
Good point, Holly. Thank you. So I mentioned earlier in the presentation, the need for a multidisciplinary approach. So to speak more to that, advancing digital equity in Vermont aligns with existing policies and priorities of equity, opportunity and resilience, which are of course all priorities that we see across, that we're now seeing across Vermont agencies. Advancing digital equity will advance education, public services, health and human services and community workforce development. So the VCBB supports a holistic approach and implementation strategy, understanding the socioeconomic outcomes that we'll see through increasing access to internet and technology. The VCBB has been and continues to work on establishing collaborations. The collaborations will vary from partnerships to indirect collaborations. The closer the partnership, the more engagement and collaborative effort, as you'll see here. And we are pursuing partnerships with community-based organizations, community anchor institutions, institutions of higher learning, workforce development agencies, and when appropriate, private sector companies. So here's our timeline spanning out for the next five years. We have highlighted major milestones for each year. You can see that we have more milestones in 2024 as like the kickoff to our implementation period than the other years. So this is intentional in that we are becoming increasingly aware of the need to organize the work. And so I consider this like front-loading the work to ensure the critical work and groundwork is happening first. In looking at what feels realistic, we have been visioning what a 10-year plan may look like. Keeping in mind that VCBB is sunsetting, we're thinking about ways to ensure this work continues meaningfully even after that sunset. One way we are visioning how to continue the work meaningfully is through a monitoring and evaluation process. So for transparency, we are exploring two options at this time. Creating a data, like just for the sake of transparency. We're considering creating a data collection and management position and considering contracting with a higher education institution. And so with either or both of these options, we're interested in strengthening our data collection, management and monitoring systems and methods, particularly with gathering more detailed and covered population-specific data. We intend to create systems to manage our established partnerships, data sharing and progress towards key performance indicators.
Do any of the other board members, I'm sorry, do any of the other board members have concern about creating additional positions within the VCBB as one of our goals? I mean, it just seems like we have a lot of folks doing a lot of things. I don't know. Data collection for a specific purpose? Any takers? Okay.
I mean, Holly, the first thing that comes to my mind is how is this going to be paid for long-term? If the vision is to go past the VCBB's, you know, window of establishment? When do we close, 2027 or 2028?
2029 is, but yeah, but to give you some more specificity of this, this is encouraged and supported by the NTI and paid for out of the digital equity program. And would, you know, the whole goal is to wind down by 2029. You know, this will be funded through the end of 2028 through the NTIA.
Gotcha. So, yeah, it begs the question of, you know, how are we going to pay for it? So obviously I've just answered that. Yeah, Holly's point is spot on. I'm thinking about, I just don't have any
Well, I think, you understand, you know, I'll reiterate that we, any positions that we would be always brought forward to the board before, we would seek permission before and justification at that time.
Can I interject a minute?
Sure.
I, a lot of what we're thinking about is how we're coordinating with all of our partner agencies and organizations as well to make sure we're leveraging the funding we're getting now so that it's not just building, we're trying not to think about it as building VCBB programs, but building digital equity programs in Vermont with our partners. And so I think the idea is we will have some of our own tasks that are during the time period where we have funding, but the hope is we also identify the other funding sources that can keep some of this work ongoing and build the work into the future with our partners.
Thanks, Alyssa.
I have a quick question, if I may, Patty.
Yeah, good. Jump in, Dan.
It's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that this funding stream is specific and separate away from the other broadband funding streams that if we don't do this, they're not in competition with each other, that the Equity Act is a separate funding stream, it's not competing with the deployment of fiber in other places or your staff or anything else. Am I right?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, great. One. Sorry.
No problem. We understand.
Oh, I'm sorry. So that wasn't a question, right? We're good to move forward?
Yeah, we're good to move forward.
Okay. All right. So the VCBB is committed to ensuring accountability and being accountable to Vermonters. We've determined ways to increase accountability on our end as well as accountability for partners and collaborators. And we're still fine-tuning these pieces. So considering what is needed to build trust and rapport and set our office up for successes, to be transparent about our progress, create multiple ways for Vermonters to learn about, engage with and participate in our work, provide regular reporting on efforts to advance digital equity and use plain language for translation and comprehension. It's important to clarify that BEAD and digital equity funds are separate. BEAD funds will focus on addressing barriers to broadband access. Digital equity funds will focus on broadband adoption and other digital equity issues.
Thank you. Brittany, I'm gonna, I'm still here swimming in the thoughts of accountability. And I'm going to say to you that I would really be in favor of putting really be in favor of putting language in here that isn't just about, um, people can understand what we're doing and it's transparent in, in language that they understand, but rather that we are actively ensuring the delivery of projects and programs funded. You know, that, that, that there is a there is a delivery assurance element under accountability, because that's what the VCBB does is not only gives out the money, but makes sure that the grants it's administering happen. And this is, this is probably somewhat controversial because the grant belongs to the feds, but the, but the recipients of the benefit are here in Vermont and the VCBB needs to make sure that it happens. So I don't think that this language reflects that role, just letting you know.
Yeah, thank you. It's, it's important point you make. We do have a responsibility to ensure that the grantees are complying with, uh, with the requirements that we set as well as the federal government. So I think that's an important point you made, Holly.
Yes, agreed. And we'll make sure that that is clearly specified here and like as we're talking about accountability.
Thank you.
Started talking about how BEAT and digital equity funds are separate. BE funds will focus on addressing barriers. Two broadband access digital equity funds will focus on broadband adoption and other digital equity issues. Affordability continues to be like the glaring issue that has yet to be addressed. VCBB is focused on solving this issue currently through increasing financial and in-kind resources that will serve Vermont beyond the NTIA program. So our goal is for digital equity to become institutionalized throughout Vermont's public and community services. So we're committed to keeping lines of communication open and offer opportunities for input in multiple ways. I'll be holding monthly office hours as a digital equity officer to allow opportunities for one-to-ones interviews and my attention to hear from Vermonters. We consider these board meetings to be great opportunities to, for public involvement and also to review, for the public to have to review at their convenience. We'll offer a 30-day public comment period that begins in December. We'll host quarterly update and listening sessions, continue to encourage our established methods of ongoing feedback via letters, emails, and phone calls. So thank you all for your time and attention. So I'm going to pause to allow an opportunity for any member of the VCBB or Vernonburg group team to provide any additional information or comment at this time.
Yeah, I just want to comment that, you know, point out to the board, I mean, how, how long have you been on the job, Brittany?
I'm five months. I'm going to be six months next month, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to really commend you coming up to speed so quickly on this, doing such a good job.
Yes, thank you very much, Brittany. Brittany and Christine, what is your direction to us in terms of getting comments to you? So we're not going to, I, I, I'm not planning to take action on this. We've been given a presentation. But how do you want to proceed with comments and feedback on what we've just been presented? Do you want comments from the board writing or?
Yes, and writing would be helpful. So you'll receive the, you'll receive the digital equity plan later today, so you'll be able to review and provide your input. We're, we're hoping that we can receive your input in the next week so that we have it going into the public, the opening of the public commenting period. And so then
Timeline to file for, for public comment on December 1st. But we certainly have other opportunities to come back to this and give our feedback. That's what I heard.
Yes, you will. Yes, you will have oppor- yes, you'll have opportunity to provide your feedback. So you'll receive the report today and have about a week's time to be able to review and provide your input before it goes out for public comment. So you can still provide your input as it's in the public commenting period. It's just that we wanted to ensure you had an opportunity to review and provide input before it start, the public commenting period begins.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think that the, the intent of this meeting in the, in the week is, is to ensure that we haven't got any glaring holes before we go to public. You know, that, but you cert- all that time you have opportunity to provide input, so.
Okay, thank you.
I was just going to add one more thing because it's a little bit different than the BEAT program because we're it's just a much, I just wanted to acknowledge that it's a much more iterative process, our public comment period. We are intending to continue making changes and taking in public comment and adjusting things. BEAT, I think we tried to get it into more of a final plan before doing it, but the way our timeline is, we're like continuing community engagement, doing public comment, doing all of the activities Brittany mentioned. And so our plan is really to keep the board involved at every board meeting between now and when we need to submit it in February to the NTIA.
And I just want to bring back, I'm just bringing back up the digital equity timeline. So as a reminder, it's so today, 11:21, we've, we've done the presentation, public comment period opens on 12/1. And then 12/11, we will have incorporated some of the, hopefully all of the updates or the, the feedback incorporating them into the plan and be able to update in a presentation to the board of like what's, what we've included since, from now until that next date on 12/11.
That's very helpful. Thank you for putting that up. Okay, any other comments on the digital equity plan? Okay, thank you very much. Tons of work is going into this tremendous amount of effort and work. Thank you to all involved. Okay, hearing note and anything else? We'll move on to item six, which is legislative priorities.
Yeah, we, we'd, we'd like to talk about, I think CV fiber, I mean, I think when I heard the board earlier, I understand that legislative priorities would take a second priority to CV fiber at Otter Creek. Those are time, highly time sensitive.
Yeah, let's, let's move up fibers, construction grant amendment and outer creek update. So we'll skip to seven, go to eight.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. I don't have my agenda for, in front of me. What is number seven? Are you ready for us now, Christine? Is that what I'm hearing? At CV fiber?
Uh, yes.
Okay, fantastic.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, go ahead, take it away.
Oh, okay. I would like to share my screen. And of course, Janil Smith, our executive director is here, and I'm Jerry D. Amantidis, chairman of the board. Let me, allow me one second here to share my screen. Bear with me one second. Are you seeing my screen?
Uh, no, we are not.
Not yet. Okay, I apologize.
Is it different than the materials that have been set out? Because everyone should have those materials.
No, it's, it's the same, says, should be, that should be the same same materials. It's just, uh,
Why don't we just go the materials in our board packet? So why don't you just go ahead and
Why don't we go with those materials? Sure, I, I apologize.
Alternatively, I believe the PowerPoint was not in the board packet, only the letter was. Is that correct? It was simply a letter that was in the board packet. You didn't receive a PowerPoint, correct?
Correct.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, um, I can share my screen. I have the PowerPoint up. Jerry, if you want to talk to the PowerPoint that I share, because it is different.
Before, before we move on though, I want to make, make sure that, are you going to need executive session for any of this because of confidentiality? Or is this all public?
Uh, I don't, I'm, I'm looser than some other folks on executive session. I think we'll be okay if some of the questioning
Yep.
gets, gets a little deeper into the weeds. We can, you know, perhaps do that if we have to, but I, I would, I, I think we're, I think we're okay here. I mean, we're, uh, but our, our meetings are all public meetings. There's, there's nothing here that, that hasn't been presented in our, in our public meetings, really.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, I'll go ahead. Sure, I'll go ahead and share now.
Thank you. So, but what I, what we are talking about today, of course, is our construction grant, and I, I would like to give a status update on where we are and, and what we've done to date. And then I'd like to talk about the, the rationale and the type of amendment that we're, that we're asking for. Uh, you could go to the next one, Janil. Thank you. Uh, and if you want to put it in slideshow, that'd be fine too, if, if that's the PowerPoint. But I just want to remind folks who we are at CV fiber and, and, and how we're set up, because I'm going to be talking about design areas. And we have, we have broken up our district into design areas. And so we really don't talk about things on a town-by-town basis. We talk about design areas. So we'll have a design area such as CLO1, CLO2, CLO3. The CL stands for Callis because that's where our OLT is. But any one of our design areas could have two or three different parts of two or three different towns within any design area. So we're not talking about entire towns when we talk about the regions that we're working on. And you can also see that we have our famous donut hole, which is the areas that, that are, that are already served that we have, we have designed around. Right? So we're, we're, we're fulfilling our universal service plan and, and focusing very much on the, on the underserved. I just want to make sure that every, everybody knows that that's our foundation and we're still doing that. That has not changed at all. Uh, next slide, Janil, please. And of course, we're not doing this on our own. We have extremely strong partnerships. Eustace is doing our construction and RTC is doing our design and construction management. And of course, Waitsfield Telecom, Waitsfield Telecom is our partner as our ISP. And we've been working very closely with Waitsfield and it's, it's a very good arrangement. All three of these firms work very, we've been working really well together. Uh, next slide, Janil. And we've made substantial progress. We, we have, as you, as you can see, we have a lot of fiber that has, that has been constructed. We've got 163 miles of fiber that's constructed, 1,200 service points, and we have customers. We have, we have started our installations and we have folks that have high-speed internet through CV fiber right now as we speak. And it's, and we're getting more every day. As you can see, we have a, a number of service points that are already in the queue for installations. And we have additional service points where folks have signed up, but they, they haven't yet had their inspection to be in the queue for their installation, but that's the, the prior step that's, that's necessary. So we are filling in our service area with service. And we will be, and working with Waitsfield and Eustace, we will be working through the winter, uh, doing installations especially, uh, but also doing some construction. Janil, could you go to the next slide, please? So what we anticipate by the end of the calendar year is that we will have four of our design areas totally constructed. We will have 1,900 service points that we've passed and we will have hung 200 miles of fiber by the, by the end of the calendar year. This is, this is what we anticipate, give or take, of course, depending on the weather and, and how things, how things close out for the season. And also how far we can continue working into, into the winter weather permitting, right? So we, we are, we are moving forward and we have installations that will continue now basically forever, right? Because we're, this, this, this is what we're doing. We're bringing fiber to the people of central Vermont. Uh, if you could go to the next slide, Janil, please. And if, if you could enlarge that somehow, either, either going to the, going to the slideshow or some aspect of that to enlarge it, because this is, this is really important and I, I want to make sure that everybody understands what, what we're doing here. In our construction grant, I, I, I believe we had 11 DAs, maybe it's 13. I don't remember off the top of my head, and they're all listed here. And what you're, what you're seeing is we're showing the green and the red. And the green is money that we've spent, money that's been obligated, what we've done with that money, and what we intend to do with the remaining grant funds that we have from Act 71. All of that is in green. So you'll see that we anticipate being able to fully construct and be able to serve the five DAs that are highlighted on the left, CLO1, 2, and 3, and RSO1 and RSO2. RS is, is, it stands for Romney School, which is the original location of the DA and, and the original location of the OLT. And that name just stuck because that's in all our, in, in all our design work. What we've done is we have completed and we've received funds for that completion for all of the DAs that we said we were going to design. So we've received our Act 71 funds for completion of that design. We have either already paid for or have obligated all of the make-ready work needed for all of the design areas in our Act 71 agreement. We have all of the materials bought and paid for, and you know, less the consumables, right? You know, wa- washers and bolts and things of that nature that pop up as you go along. But, but all of the electronics, all of the fiber, all of the materials that we need for all of the DAs in our Act 71 agreement. We have all of that material on hand. We also have Town ARPA funds. We are, are negotiations with the towns and these funds are to be used for installations within those towns. So as I said, a certain, a certain DA may have two or three different towns and a, and a, a town may be spread out over three DAs. I think East Montpelier covers three DAs or is covered by three DAs. So tho- those Town ARPA funds get split up among our DAs, but these are our agreements with, with the towns and with the VCBB match that we have these funds available for installations. Plus, we have construction funds available for installations. The important point here is
Yes, Jerry, can I just stop you for one second?
Please do, yes.
Very excited about these ARPA fund matches. Congratulations. And they are for installations to the home?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. They are, they are, they are segregated for that purpose by town. Yes.
Yes, the, and the MOUs we have with the towns are for installations to the homes and for community anchor institutions. Those are the, those are the purposes.
That's correct. So in, in, the reason I've set this table up this way is that we have the red and the green. To, to our best estimation, we will be able to do the construction and everything that is in green will use will use all of the funds from our Act 71 grant. The final construction for RSO3 all the way down to PFO1, that final construction is costing more than the grant money that we have and we are seeking other funds to do, to do that work. And what I'm, the, the reason I'm, reason I'm bringing this forward here is that our construction grant as it stands right now requires the construction completion of all those DAs in order to get our final payments. And what I'm asking here is that we amend that construction grant so that we can get our full allocation by doing everything that you see in the green. And we can talk about why that money didn't stretch as far as we hope, originally hoped it would to include the areas that are in the red. But those funds are not going to stretch that far. And I want to make sure that everybody understands that everything you see there in the green has either been completed, it's been paid for, or the money is fully obligated for those, for those purposes. And our intention in 2024 is to get some kind of loan funding, especially to be able to allow us to get into MAO1, 2, and 3. Because if you look at the number of passings, that's, that's, that's over a thousand passings of 25, 3 or less in MAO1, 2, and 3. And we are three and a half million dollars shy of completing that construction. So we're looking for else, funds elsewhere to do that. But we, we do want to get an amendment so that we can be, uh, get our full allocation of Act 71 funds for the work that we've already done and for the work that we anticipate completing with those funds.
I'd like to understand this. Where you have incomplete construction, is it, uh, is it brought to a point of completion such that it is, um, stable? I mean, you know, like you've got, what happens? You've got fiber hanging but not strong?
No, 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 no. Allow me to explain that. No, thank you, because when we realized that we were going to have what we call the funding gap, when, when we realized that, we, we made sure that the way we worked with our contractors and gave our notices to proceed with the contractors, we, we made sure that we would be able to complete the five DAs that I show here is in green and that we have not hung the fiber for the other DAs. The designs are complete, the make-ready is, is paid for and mostly complete. And the OLTs are, are, um, we have all of the electronics and all the permits, everything we need for the OLTs. But what we didn't do is hang half the fiber for all of the design areas and have nobody able to get connected. So we, we, we aligned our construction work and our spending allocations so that when we, when we've spent all our money, we've got five DAs that are fully able to have subscribers and, and, and we'll have, uh, you know, hundreds of subscribers, many hundreds of subscribers with that, with that, uh, work complete. So we don't have, you know, half the fiber hung somewhere or that, that kind of thing. We, we made sure that we had fully complete DAs so that we could get subscribers. Did that get to your question?
It does, Jerry, but I'm going to now respond to you in a way that'll sound inflammatory. It's not intended to be. I just want to make sure that I'm envisioning this correctly. Another way to look at this request is that you're re-rescoping the, the DAs or the project plan to, um, limit the, the scope to certain addresses and complete that while you look for funding for the remainder.
I, I think that's correct. When you say limit the scope, limiting the scope, the limitation, the, the, the change would be that all the work has been completed up to the point where the, some of those DAs are ready for construction of fiber. Everything that needs to be done up to that point will have been done. And for the five DAs, we'll be able to complete everything and have all of the fiber hung. But for the remaining seven DAs, we, we have everything completed but for the fiber.
So yes, that's, that's what I get. And what's the lifetime, for example, of the make-ready? So, you know, if you, if it took you a year to come back and get new funding, is that make-ready still good?
A lot of that make-ready is, quite a lot of that make-ready is still good. Yes, it, it certainly, it certainly should be still good. Go ahead, Janil. I can see you'd like to add something.
Right. So, so we've been advised from our utility partners that the make-ready they do is for a five-year period. So they cut back trees, for instance, for five years. And so, uh, we get out there and every once in a while, there's something that, there's, there's a tree that needs to be trimmed back, um, unexpectedly. But for the most part, um, we, we have a long lead window for the make-ready.
Thank you.
Now, al- al- also as a, as a, as a part of, uh, as a part of the, the, the read ahead, or maybe this wasn't in the read ahead, but we've been, we have sent a proposed language to the VCBB on, on, you know, what, what an amendment might look like. I don't know that we want to get into those, into the weeds here with, with that, but we, um, you know, we think that the, the language change could be relatively uh, simple change to, to, to allow what we're, what we're asking for. So what, I guess what, what we would like to see is, I don't, I don't know, Christine, if this requires a vote or, or, you know, how we close this out here. But I, I, I would first of all, like to make sure that everybody understands our, our position. And I, I, I would certainly like to leave this meeting knowing that folks agree um, with, with what we're proposing. And I see hands are up. Um, Holly, you were first, if, if.
I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Patty leave the meeting from here, Jerry, and I defer to my colleague Dan.
Okay, thank you, Holly. Thank you, Holly, for that. And, uh, just to let folks know, I can't see the full screen. So if you've got your hand up, I see, okay, Dan and Holly have their hands up. First question I want to, uh, put, I want to lead off with a question to Christine. Can we do what's contemplated in this request?
Yes, what they're, what, what the request, the request is to reduce the, the scope of what was required of the grant. Our, the, the staff position on this is, you know, we, we support the idea because, of course, they need to get to paying customers as quick as possible. But we're also, hey, you know, made it very clear that they need to come up with a revised business plan, um, that, for any future funding. Tony, do you want to weigh in? Yes, the legalities, yes, we, the board, but the board would need to vote on this.
In your opinion, we're not violating anything relative to Bulletin 5 or any other requirements that we have in terms of issuance of grants?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. All right, that is my first question to see. First of all, if we are enabled to take action. Uh, I've got to open up questions from the board members, Dan and Holly.
Uh, okay, thank you. Um, Jerry, thank you. I, I, the next slide, I think, has, um, some language on it that might be helpful, but um, my understanding is, if I got this right, that you built about half the mileage you had originally planned. And you sacrificed perhaps a couple hundred connections in doing that. Do I have that understanding correct so far?
We have, the, the final build was originally about 400 miles. And what we're saying here is that we are, we are going to be able to, to build about 200 miles, maybe a little more with the funds that we have. But please understand, and that's why I built this table to look this way. It's not as if we've done half the work. We, I mean, we've, we've done all the design work. We've done all the make-ready work. We've purchased all the materials that, that, the, so, you know, one way of looking at this would be if we don't do the red, the part that's in red, we have all these stranded assets out there. Because we've, we've already, we've already done everything that needs to be done to get the construction started. If we had the funds, we could sign a notice to proceed. But I'm not going to sign a notice to proceed when my forecasting shows that the funds aren't available.
I understand that. Thank you. So, but according to the next chart, it looks to me, if I'm reading it, um, that you only sacrificed about 200 customers in that reduction and the way you managed getting to this state. And that your proposed, um, project summary expands to even more customers than what you had originally. Do I have that correct?
No, you don't, sir, and I apologize. Um, it, the, the, the original language in our grant, I believe, is missing a word. And the word is eligible, where it talks about 2, 2,000 passings, I believe it says. And it should say 2,000 eligible passings. So that's, that's the, that's, there's a, there's, there's a, a word that's, a word that's missing there in the original, in the original grant work. But, but we are, as, I, I, I think it's, it's very instructive to look at the number of passings in the table because you, you can, you can see that as far as the, the very next thing that we want to do, that MAO1, 2, and 3 has a very high proportion of underserved. And there, and they are, they are right there um, with, with every, everything ready but for 3 and 1/2 million in construction funding.
Could you speak more about? Um, and I don't, like Holly said, I don't mean to be infam- I want to understand uh, more about the, um, delta between what you had forecasted to what your experienced um, costs are. You spoke about materials, but if you could speak in more detail about that, I'm, I'm really interested in the drivers, because what you're experiencing is probably, well, I want to understand it.
No, a- a- absolutely. There are, there are a number of, a number of things here that, that add up to, to make the difference and, and there are rising prices. We know about that and including rising, rising costs for our contractors. But I would say really that-
I'm sorry to interrupt you. As you speak about it, could you quantify it, please, if you can?
Uh, yes. So we, no, I, no, I, 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 I can. We had, we had underestimated the cost per mile for construction, I believe, on the order of 15%. And that, that doesn't include everything. That's not the whole delta, mind you, but that, but that, that, that's a part of it. But the, I believe the larger part of the delta is that we didn't realize the amount of administrative support and the amount of professional assistance that we would need to make this happen. To, to, to actually get this fiber hung and, and, and to get customers on board required more staff, required more consultant time and cost than we had originally anticipated. And, and I would say that despite all of our best intentions, there isn't enough volunteer horsepower to go around to drive an organization like this. And the day-to-day work requires professional staff and professional support through contractors more than we had anticipated. And, and I, and I believe that's, that, that's really the, the, the case for the delta. I mean, we have been through our, we have been through our, um, our, our, uh, single audit, very care, very, you know, very careful audit that we, we've been through. And we came out looking real, I think, we, we did really, really well. I mean, the, the, the adjustments required from our audit were marginal and administrative. Um, so we, we came through a single audit looking, looking quite good. Um, and so it's, it's, it's not that the, the money isn't accounted for or it's, I mean, we, we, we know where every dollar went and we know where every bolt is located. Um, but it takes money to do that, more than we anticipated. Uh, in our, in our material inventory and, and in, in our management of materials, construction and, and design, really just make the make-ready, the effort to get the make-ready going. Not only did the make-ready cost more than we anticipated, but again, that's, you know, on the margin. It's not like make-ready was three times more than we anticipated, but the level of effort to get that make-ready available was more than we anticipated.
Thank you.
Okay, Holly, you're up. So this is really painful in, to me, because I think there's, um, you know, such a commendable effort here on the part of the CUD, Janil and Jerry, to explain and identify a shortcoming, to propose a solution and, um, and in the process to serve, to serve as many people as possible who are eligible. The real problem I have, though, is that as a policy matter, I don't know how to make this an exception. Because I think this, this situation could or does apply to every CUD. Um, and I don't know how to maintain the administrative position of with, uh, holding back all the funds and ensuring universal service, those two objectives, while releasing the funds to partial completion. It's so difficult. And I actually don't know where you're going to get 3 and 1/2 million dollars myself. Um, so there is no concrete plan for that. I don't propose, but I mean, maybe there is, but it's all conjecture at this point. Doesn't it have to be? So, um, I'm, I'm really, I'm, I'm just expressing to my fellow, fellow board members, as a policy matter, I am extremely concerned. And when it does, when, Tony, when you advise us that there's no resistance or, or, um, no legal reason why we can't approve this change, I really am wondering whether that, uh, council considers the universal service requirement and the requirements of, um, accountability that are inherent in the statute. I'm just, those are my concerns. Um, and, and thank you, Patty.
May I respond to that?
Of course.
Thank you. Thank you, Holly. I, I, and I very, very much appreciate what, what, what your position is here and what, what you've just stated. Um, but let me, let me give you our perspective on how we're dealing with this. Okay? We always knew that. We were extremely fortunate to be able to get these ARPA funds, these ACT 71 funds, extremely fortunate, but we also knew. That, that, those funds were to be used to set up the CUDs for success. We always knew that those funds were not for. Full completion of our universal plan. The idea was, at least in, in my understanding, the idea was that we, we had these funds in order to be able to get the CUD on their feet. And at that point, we would be out looking for loans. To complete our construction. That was always the long-term plan. And that is still the long-term plan, and we are, we are working right now. With, with our fiduciary PFM to find the funds to. Continue construction in 2024, and we have already. Put out a, a request for expressions of interest, which we've had responses to. And we're getting ready to put out an RFP for, um, basically a, a, a bridge loan. To get us through to the point where we have sufficient number of subscribers. That we could maybe even move to the bond market in a year or two. So we, we're on the same path that we always thought we would be on. Uh, you know, there, there are more turns in the road than we anticipated, but it's the same path and, and. And we're, we're moving forward really in, in, in the same way that was anticipated. We just didn't get as far. And we didn't know, when we wrote our application. It, it was, it was our best estimate at the time and. Were we to write that same application again today with this knowledge, of course. It would, it would, it would be, it would be far different in the same way that our budget. As we go from year to year and we grow and learn and have experience. Our budget goes from, from less of a swag to more of a professional estimate of what we need to function. And that's what happened to us here. So I think we're on this, we're on the road we always meant to be on. We're just on a different place on that road.
I, I have a follow-up. Um, so Jerry, I hear, I hear you on that. I think it's a valid. Comment qualification. You're looking for a bridge loan. I'm wondering if we should treat the grant funds as a bridge loan. That, it, to the point of completion, but, but I'm, I'm. I'd like to talk about timing here a little bit. You say you're going to work right through the winter. Good, good for you.
To the, to the extent we can, of course, it, it, it's, it all depends.
Yeah, exactly. It all depends. And so I, rather than. Rather than meting out the remainder of the grant funds. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to ride this wave with you. In watching how your. Timing plays out instead of saying, yeah, sure, complete the grant. Maybe we could. See what your urgent and most urgent and immediate needs are. And see what your response to third-party financing look like. I, I'd like to know what you think about that and whether you have a calendar for what your. Costs are over the next six, nine months.
Well, we, we absolutely do have a, a calendar of, of what our, what our spending. Would look like on a, on a, on a monthly basis. Um, and, and that, that's, that's what we've been working with, um, our fiduciary on. Um, so that potential lenders would know what that drawdown, as we've been calling it, looks like. Um, and, and you, you can imagine based on what I'm presenting in this table. You, you can, you can imagine that the, the, the drawdown for construction, if we do MA one, two, and three. The drawdown for that construction really hits in Q2, Q3, and Q4 of 2024 calendar year. And, 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 you know, there, there's not going to be expenditures on that, on that, in that area. Over the winter. The, uh, the, the, the winter work that we're looking for is the. Hopefully the continuation of work in CLO3. Which was an area that we had a, a lot of, it took a long time to get the make ready done. And, and we're, we're hoping to be able to keep a couple of crews to, as long as they can be. Working through the winter, doing, doing that construction. And of course, installs will happen throughout. But that's, that's what we're looking for next year is, is the. Uh, we believe that there is the, the mileage for MAO one, two, and three. Is, is, is work that, that, that can be done in calendar year 24. And the, the, the drawdown would, you know, very possibly the actual. Spending and writing of the checks would, would, would may well bleed over into. Into 2025, you know, Q1, where you're paying for the work that was done in Q3 and Q4 of 2024. But we do have that calendar. And like I said, all of the other work is done. So we know, we know exactly where we're going to be and what we need to do.
Yeah, Patty, Patty, I want to point out that Laura texted that she has a question. She's on the phone, so she hasn't been able to.
Yes. Yep. Holly, are you all done? I, I'm, I'm sitting here thinking, I'm not like signed off. I don't want to misrepresent, but. Yeah, but thank you. Okay, Laura, you're up.
Laura, if you're speaking, we can't hear you. Hello?
Jerry, I know it's in here someplace, but the remained, remaining amount of your grant is how mu, how many dollars?
We are, we are basically down to the 10%, the 8% and the 2%. Closeout is, 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 is what we're, what we're down to, and we also.
The dollar amount is, the dollar amount is what?
The dollar amount is 1.8, I think. And we have, we have also not asked for. Funds that we could have asked for previously, but we, we, we asked, um, we worked with the VCBB to not. Request, I believe we have 400 or 40, 400, 450,000. That we could have asked for that we didn't because we're holding that for salaries. For calendar year 24.
So.
The 10%, the 8% and the 2%, if you remember how the, the grants are structured, there's, there's. Uh, 8% that's held back for the final testing, and then there's the 2% that is six months post. You know, showing that we were still fulfilling our universal service plan up, if, if I remember correctly what that's for.
So Jerry, or maybe. In our packets, there's a project milestone table. And if you could refer to a line item on this table of exactly what you're asking for today would be helpful.
Oh, oh, yes, ab- absolutely. What we're, what we're. Um, what we are asking for today, bear with me, um. One moment, please. What we are asking for is. I need, I need us, another pair of hands, pardon me. So what we're asking for is in the project milestones. We are all the way through. It's the, really the last two project milestones.
So the 1.136 million and the 284,000.
Yes, and out of the 1.719, that amendment number one award. We held back approximately 400,000 in asking for that. We, 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 we. You know, that, that's, that seemed a, a, a reasonable way to do the ask when we, when we worked with the VCBB because. Knowing the funding gap, we wanted to make sure we had salary money for our staff, and that's what that. That's what that 400,000 out of the 1.7 million. Is. So it's the 1.1 and the 284,000. Where we, where we would like to see the change.
Okay. I'm not sure if Laura, in a place where she can ask her question. Laura, are you there? If so, you have the floor. If you're speaking, Laura, we cannot hear you. Christine, do you see that Laura's still on?
Yeah, I think, I think she's 3840233. Let me check that number.
In the meantime, yeah, have we con, have we confirmed that we are? I apologize if I missed this. We're able to legally do this? I mean, I thought CV was at their allocation and. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, that was the first question I asked, and I want to talk to Tony more once we've. Asked all of our questions.
Yeah, I think the question, I think the, uh, there's. To follow up, Brian. That, that they're asking for a change. There, you know, I think there's two different questions. If it's more money, that, that, if it's more money, that's a separate subject. But a change in the grant is what we're asking here, and Tony, you know, maybe you can elaborate more on that.
So it's, so it's same money, smaller scope?
Right, yeah.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Patty, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, hello. Excellent.
Great. So I have a couple of questions just around. The timing of this and. And the timing of it coming to the board. So how long has staff been aware that this was likely to be the case?
This has been.
No, this is VCBB, VCBB staff.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, please.
I'm going to ask, uh. We, we've been, we've been putting it in the weeklies since the spring, but you know, as soon as we knew about it, we put, started putting it in the weeklies. But, but we, you know, we've been working with CV to, to get to a formal point where they could bring it to the board, but we, we have been keeping you informed of the weeklies.
That there was a shortfall?
That we had a problem. We didn't know the extent of the shortfall. As you, if you follow the weeklies, it evolved as we, as we dug into it.
So I, I mean, I typically do follow the weeklies. That's why I asked for Otter Creek to be on there, so I'll have to go back and look at this. So one, now my question, I guess, is for, is for Jerry, and it's also a comment and maybe a, 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 a point of reflection for me and maybe others on the board. So. When we passed ACT 79, uh, telling Vermonters that nobody was going to come and save them, they needed to put these. Um, they needed to do this themselves, follow the EC fiber. Process, um, which at that point was almost 10 years old. You know, we, the response was tremendous. CV fiber was already, um, in, you were already moving in that direction. Uh, ACT 79 is called the Accelerating Broadband Deployment Act, and that was. Um, you know, the 10 years that it took EC fiber to get up and, and running was not going to work after COVID. We knew that. We knew there was going to be a tremendous amount of dollars. And so the VCBB itself, this organization. Was put in place anticipating that our CUDs would have. A, a number of shared challenges around financing, engineering, finding partners. Just a number of, they'd be on a number of similar paths, even though we expected. Different implementation on the ground or anticipated different partnerships on the ground. So my question for you is, Jerry, I heard you say that you did not anticipate the administrative. Costs that were necessary. I, we certainly understand about inflation and labor changes, and I think that's a, something we, we, we need to think about how to factor in as a board. My question for you is, what are the resources? Uh, administrative resources that you have used that have saved you money at the VCBB? That you did not have to procure yourself, that were there, that, then you did not need to procure or, or find?
Well, we, I'm, 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 let me know if I'm straying from what you're, what you think a response should, should look like. We, we have purchased our fiber as a part of a group. So there, there was a, there was a, a group purchase of fiber. Um, we have been. For example, the, the fiduciary that we are using has been identified and vetted through Vcuda. Um, so that was a, that was a, that was a, a, a group effort where we didn't have to. Um, go out on, you know, on our own and, 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 you know, find someone.
That was not, that's not VCBB, though. The fiduciary, that's Vcuda.
That was, well, that was through Vcuda, right? Um, but in, i- i- in some ways. We're in the van here. We're, 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 we're kind of out, out in front. I mean, we, we. We, we saw this gap coming, but we didn't know how much it was. Um, we, we talked about a funding gap early on. Um, this year. Um, we, we, as I had mentioned, we reallocated. Our construction so that we could be sure when the money ran out, we had customers and folks would get. Service. We wouldn't be stuck with 10 half-built. Uh, design areas where, where nobody's getting service. Um, so. You know, in, internally, we've, we've responded in this way. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure I, I have additional information that goes to your question.
Okay, I'm, I am, just want, I'm asking myself. Uh, is the VCBB offsetting enough costs for the CUDs? Are they serving in? Or coordinating, uh, in a coordinating role as was envisioned enough in terms of. Or are, are these admin costs? So I, I guess, and we have not really had that kind of discussion, I think, or analysis, and so that's. That's something I'm wondering about. Um, I'm wondering about. You know, universal service and accountability. I mean, those are the two things, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure how to account. For inflation. And other post-COVID challenges here. And I'd also like to understand what sort of guarantees or plan or reassurances we have about the remaining part of. Um, the original contract. I guess that's it for now for me, Patty.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Holly, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I do, and it's because. Um, I don't, I think it's disingenuous to reframe this as we're just changing the scope. We're really changing. The grant model. I mean, most every federally funded grant has a holdback. And what I'm trying to figure out is whether we can spend the holdback. now in promise of a restoration of the holdback later. And I, I, I'm sitting here going, we knew this wasn't going to be enough money to do all the, all the eligible addresses, so what was our plan in terms of getting people to a certain point where they are stuck in this hole? That of our, which should have been foreseeable. I do wish we had had more updates as a board, and you know, if I'm under morning quarterbacking here, I wish we would have talked and planned for this, this situation. I'm really uncomfortable with eliminating the 8% and the 2% as a matter of accountability. I'd like to find a way to create a pool of money that is meant for stopgap measures, and I'm wondering what other assets the VCBB has that we could use as a, almost like a revolving loan fund, like a revolving grant fund, to help CUDs as they responsibly come into the reality of the cost required to do these projects. I'm not aware of any money just sitting around, but it's something that staff, staff is not helping us solve this problem just by saying, yeah, we should revise the contract, revise the grant. Staff has got to help us solve this problem.
So Patty, I just want to jump in one more time and note that I want to be actually crystal clear on this point, which is with the passage of Act 71 and the implementation of the VCBB, it was never, with a capital N, a sense that these would be completely grant-funded or publicly financed. It was always presumed that there would be lending, financing of some other sort, and in fact, that was a part of the urgency of establishing this group, this board, was to, to scale that solution.
Yeah, but Laura, you, this is the problem. We know that it takes about three years of revenue to-
Understood.
-market, and so now we have a problem of our own in the legislature's creation. And, and really what we should have done is only made grant amounts for partial, not whole districts. So universal service had to be part of the plan, but not part of the grant making, so that the revenue could be generated for three years before the bond money came in and, and was sufficient to do the rest. That providing the bond money is going to come, and, and, you know, I remain hopeful on that.
Yeah, and I, I would not disagree with you, I would not disagree with you, Holly, I just want to be clear that that was always the intent, and that in fact was an anticipated function of this entity, and so.
So why didn't we structure these grants differently?
Right.
Well, actually, that may be a question for Glenn, Jeremy, what efforts do you have in play for the bond market, loans, debt?
Yeah, can, can I jump in briefly, I have my hand up, just, just to say that I think, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to piggyback on what Laura said. You know, this, this is, we are working closely to help find bridge financing. You know, we, we don't want to talk in public session about what, what we're doing specifically in those areas. This is not, you know, this is not, if you look at, if you look at inflation and, and what happens, you know, they're, they're originally looking at 2,100 addresses, now we're looking at 1,900, we don't see this as a crisis. And, you know, we have provided support through NBRC to Vcuda, you know, the, the funding sources to do that, that may, may not, CV may not have seen behind the scenes, but I, I, I do agree with Laura, we didn't plan on funding these 100%. Financing was part of it. I think we would be jumping the gun right now if we changed our ARPA allocation programs. We've, you know, we are, like I say, this is an information session, not necessarily meant for the board to take action, other than the request to reduce the scope of this existing grant.
What, what, what's the point there? Is it to take action to reduce the scope, or is it not? It's just this information only, I can-
Oh, no, no, it's, it's, it's information about what's happening, but we do need to reduce this, we do support the idea of them reducing the scope of the grant.
That's a pretty material change, so I, I mean, that's an action to me.
Right, yes, that's an action.
Material on the panel.
Patty, who's, who's talking now? Put a lot of hands up.
Yep.
No, I just, what, what order are we going to go in?
Yeah, so Christine, I just want to draw a point, you're stating that the request of us today is to reduce their scope relative to service area? That's what you're saying?
Yes, it's not. We're not asking for anything beyond that at this, at this point. There are suggestions around reconfiguring ARPA and those kind of things, but we're, we're not looking at, we're not ready for that recommendation.
I move to, and I apologize, but I've got a very small screen here, so I can't see everybody who has their hand up. Let's move to Brian, because Brian has to leave at 11, and then Laura.
So so, so I guess my, one of my first questions is, like, I would like to see an updated business case on this, because this, this reduction in scope materially affects the business case. And like, lacking that, I don't think we can make any sort of a decision today, I'm not comfortable making a decision today. The other thing I'm curious about is, you know, what other options have been explored here other than reducing scope and, you know, raising outside money? Has there been any discussions with other CUDs about potentially partnering or merging? Have there been any discussions with other telcos about perhaps that have, that operate in the area about them having interest in joining the project now that it's, you know, some very good work has been done? And, and the headwinds that have been hit are not, you know, anybody's fault, it's, it seems like it's inflation-related mostly. But, you know, with the amount of work that's been done, it changes the financial attractiveness of potentially partnering with somebody to help come in and, and finish the scope. So those are the types of things I'm curious about, the information we have today, it's a great update, but it's, it's not complete enough to make any sort of a decision from my perspective, I'm done.
May I respond to that? Patty, may I respond to that?
Yes, Jerry, you can respond.
Just, just to that, I won't go to my other point. Yeah, we actually have, sir, been investigating other routes that I, I really believe is something that should be discussed in executive session, and some of that may even be a little premature for even, even that discussion. But yes, we are talking with folks, and just, just to assure you of that, if I may, and, and I'm done, Patty.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, maybe what we should do is put this on the agenda for the next meeting to have an executive session and go into some of those nitty-gritty details, Jerry, that you guys are involved in. Let's go to Dan, then Laura.
I, just hearing that, I would be interested in going to executive session and hearing what that is, certainly before we make any decisions about this. That's all my comment is.
Okay, Laura?
Yeah, just a question for Christine. Christine, do you see that this is a unique issue right now? Or are you seeing this as you're looking out at all of the CUDs as something that we should anticipate, maybe a challenge for other CUDs?
Well, it's, it's certainly a potential for other CUDs, if you look, but the, you know, we-
But are you aware of it?
I am not aware of any major issues with, with others at this time, but I, but I want to make sure that we recognize that that is a risk we face. But we've only have two other CUDs that we haven't allocated ARPA funds to yet, and, and NEK Northwest. But yes, this, this is a potential problem with any business case.
Thanks.
Oh, yeah, I should say that I think we should get an update from DV Fiber as well.
And I think most of the board members have kind of tipped their hand as to where their thoughts are. I think everyone is in a place of not being ready to take action on a request at this point. I've heard a request for an updated business plan. I would like to frame a question to Jerry and Janelle about activities to get loans. As Laura very adeptly pointed out, we'd never envisioned that the grant funds were going to fund everything. And just, I would like more information on CV Fiber's pursuit of debt and loan funds and what that looks like, their timing, plans for that, what have they done so far? What do they expect in terms of getting loan funds?
Is that something you'd like to hear now, Patty?
Yes.
Yes, sure.
Is that in executive session, or is that not?
We, we can, we can, we can do as much of this publicly, and if, if the questions persist, we can, we can, we can change.
Because I'd, I'd like, I'd like Patty's list was just, you know, debt. But it was true that Brian asked partnering, and my, my additional inquiry is, you know that when you make this amendment, we are going to apply that condition that VCBB policies will be applicable to your original grant.
I, I, un- un- understood. Point of clarification, if I may, Holly, one of the things that you had mentioned was removing the holdback, and that's not at all what we're, what we're asking for. What, what, what we're asking for is simply the terms of what releases the holdback. We're not, we're not, we're not asking that there is no holdback. We're, we're, we're just asking that the terms of the holdback be, be changed as a, as a point of clarification.
I, I, I understand, I'm feeling that's a distinction without a difference in my world, that's why I'm, I'm having a hard time.
Okay. So we, we have engaged a fiduciary, PFM, and we have, I believe I mentioned before, put out a request for expressions of interest looking for funding to, to perform the construction that's in the red part of that, of that table. We've, we've received expressions of interest, and we are following up with a request for proposals. NDAs, non-disclosure agreements are going to be signed, we're, we're opening up information to those potential lenders. And we are, we're doing that right now, we're, we're hoping to get an RFP out in December. And we're looking for funds so that we can perform construction with those funds in 2024. We have a very specific budget with specific drawdown. Of course, it depends on how much money would be made available to us. But that's, we're, we are actively pursuing that.
And also a point, yeah, and also for the timing, that's, this is really important, to keep the crews busy in the, in the field, we need to have assurances from our, from our lenders of funds so that we can give assurances to our crews to keep them in market. So we're keeping a close eye on the construction season and to be able to provide those assurances to the construction crews within Q1 of 2024, so that we don't lose them into the construction season.
All right, well, is it the wish of the board that we go into executive session to talk about some of those other possibilities?
I, I mean, there, there's, my feeling, Patty, is this is too important to try to have a spontaneous conversation on this, as we patch, as we patchwork together, you know, the different requests we're giving to CV and what CV's prepared. So my, my opinion is, I mean, maybe we have a separate hour-long meeting in the next coming days, just on this topic alone and nothing else. But we get a little bit better organized and, and, and help CV understand where we're coming from a little more, so they can not be cobbling, trying to cobble together, you know, kind of off-the-top-of-the-head responses from us.
I do appreciate that, thank you, and, 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 you know, I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure even in executive session, without having spoken to others, how comfortable I would be talking too broadly, so jumping into executive session right now may not provide the level of information we can provide with more preparation.
Yeah, I, I agree with Brian's structure on that, is if we had a one-hour, even a half-hour specific, where everybody could be prepared on this, that would be a good use of time, sorry to interject.
This, Jerry, is this something that's possible, that you could wait till the next board meeting? Or do you need something sooner, Jerry and Janelle?
Yeah, I believe we can wait, I don't, I don't, I, I, if, if, you know, if that's what suits the board, we'd rather have a more fully informed and, and, and more comfortable decision than, than something, you know, that feels rushed. Again, we're not asking for money at this point, right? So it's, it's not, it, it, it's, it's a, it's an administrative change that we're looking for, a significant one, but we will, we will continue performing the green part of our grant, the green part of the table, we'll continue performing that, and we will continue pursuing funds to, to build what's in, in the red portion of that table, and that, that's not going to change.
Right, right.
Right.
And it, it would be my preference that if we can get our ducks in order to have a, a little more detailed discussion, and Tony, I'm going to put you on the spot a little to prepare for us how we can make these changes. I, I'm a little, I'm very concerned about making the change as listed. So I would like more information as to how we are enabled to do this, and just-
Patty, get from my bad, Patty, I understand your question.
Okay, thank you. And then coming to this with some, you know, giving us a more knowledge into what's going on from all the parties' questions would be great. So if we can do this at the next meeting, rather than try to hold a special meeting, I think that's going to be difficult. Holly, you have your hand up? You're muted, Holly.
Just, I, I'm really pleased that we're headed in this direction, just adding to Jerry's to-do list. I think having a timeline, it would be very helpful for us, too, so that we understood that the timing for the funding and the timing for exhausting other opportunities. While I have the floor, though, could you explain to me this table where it says that, I'm looking specifically at CLO3, and it says that 10% of the make-ready is complete, but 100% of construction will be complete in 2024? And I'm just like, that's, you're feeling confident that make-ready will be done in these, pardon me, in these areas, right? Like, that's-
Yes, yes. It, it, it has taken us a long time to get traction with that particular utility, that CLO3 is basically 100% this, this utility, that we've had a lot of difficulty getting traction. We've paid for the construction, for the make-ready many, many months ago. And it's just taken a very long time to get that make-ready performed, it is now being performed, and, and it's, it's moving forward. So our anticipation is that that make-ready will continue to the extent possible through the, through the winter and into Q2 and of next year, and we will be able to do that construction. There's already a- There's already a notice to proceed to our contractors. We had never expected that this make ready would just take so long to be performed. But it is now being performed.
Yeah, I think we should be, I think we should be providing the CV a list of kind of information that we would like to see at the next discussion, rather than having to just get it from us verbally today. If we could do that as a follow-up, that would be great.
I think that's a great suggestion, Brian. Thank you.
Thank you.
So any board, board members send suggestions to Christine in our entire group so we can see what's being said. Do via email would be best, VCBB email. But I think that's a great suggestion so that we can have a very informed and deliberate discussion at our next board meeting. Okay, anything else on CV fiber's request? All right, hearing none. Thank you all. Christine, do you have anything else or are we done?
I think we're done with CV fiber. We'd like to move into Otter Creek.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next up is Otter Creek.
Yeah, so this, at the November 13th board meeting, the board, the board asked for an update on Otter Creek CUD build. As you remember, we gave Otter Creek a grant to, to work with Fidium to build out their, their territory. But since that issuance of the grant, you know, we, we've been informed another party in the district has received funding and federal obligations to build out their area. And their parties are currently in negotiation for a solution that benefits the public at large. But we, we, we believe the board should be informed about what's happening here. And we'd like to do that in executive session so we don't impact the negotiations that they are having with other parties.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we move into executive session to discuss proprietary information relative to Otter Creek. Your second?
Patty, I'm going to have to.
I'll second.
Dan, second. Thank you. And Brian, you're going to drop off at 11?
Yeah, so I'll be just in for a moment.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd like, we'd like to, yeah, we'd like to include Tony, Rob, myself, and Alexi and Chance as well, as well as the representatives from Otter Creek.
Okay, and who, who will be from Otter Creek?
Um, that would be myself, Laura Black, and I believe that Larry Corcel is also on the call. That's the, is anyone else from Otter Creek on the call? I didn't see anyone else.
Christine, just reflecting the minutes, who's in executive session, please?
Yep, I will do that. I think Lucy, I wonder if Lucy should be involved as well. I'll leave that up to Lucy.
Can I ask for one more? Is our consultant that works with us of Vantage Point, Caleb Boone is also on? Can he join as well?
Yes, I'd like to join.
Thank you.
Okay, all those, any further discussion on going into executive session for Otter Creek? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous for the ayes. All right, we'll move into executive session.
Okay, I'm sending you all over now. VCBB staff needs to move over other than Tony or you will go automatically.
Okay, thank you.
It looks like Laura has been moved.
No.
Oh, sorry Laura, I still had your phone. Let me fix that.
Christine, so you have to click on the top of your screen where it says rooms?
Yeah, executive session, thank you.
Melissa?
Did you, I, you should have gotten it.
No. Oh, join the room. There we go.
Alyssa, do they need to do anything to come back into main session?
I just closed the room.
Okay, so they should all be invited back now.
There we go. It's working. We have everybody back?
Dan?
Is Dan back? Since we don't hear him, I assume no.
He's not over there.
Maybe he dropped. Yeah. All right, I'm gonna hope he's navigating his way back in. I'm just gonna report out for the executive session. There were no actions taken during the executive session for Otter Creek update. We are back in public session. It is 11:41. And the board would like to take up an update on the legislative RFP legislative, what do I want to call that?
Government affairs.
Government affairs position. Tony. Affairs are... Hold on, Christine. Yep. We want to take that item on the agenda, then proceed to VICUDA update, public comment, and then close. That's the game plan because it's 11:42 at this point. Okay. We can move to legislative government affairs RFP status update.
Yep, Tony, can you provide the status? Tony's been doing the research on this.
Yeah, so the status is that we have confirmed through, well, I understand that the USF funds are going to be available. So we're in the process of preparing an RFP. I don't know if it's going to go out before Thanksgiving, but if not, it'll go up immediately after.
Thank you.
Anything else on that? Any other questions? Okay, great. All right, let's move to VICUDA's update and then public comment.
Hi, folks. I am actually starting a long drive, so it's not an ideal time for an update. But we'll keep it short, and I'll have a more substantial update at the monthly meeting in December. I think, you know, the biggest thing is just congratulations to the staff and Bernenberg and everyone on completing a very complicated and important volume two submission. I think, you know, we feel like we had our chance to provide our input. I think we, we understand where the staff ended up on a number of the positions they took and are delighted that it's going to get submitted and that's going to move forward. So I think with that, I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. Congratulations, and we'll see you in a week and a half.
Thank you. Okay, let's move to public comment.
Yep, so we open up for public comment. Please raise your hand. I'll recognize you in the order that you've, hand came up, and you'll have three minutes. Any public comment at this point? Okay, we have a hand. Oh, I saw some. Oh, there we go. See a hand going up and down from FX when? Okay, FX, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry about that. Clicking too hard. Hey, I just wanted to clarify one thing that came up in the earlier discussion about bonding and three years of cash flow and audited financials and all that. So the the investment bank that we work with to issue our bonds, MCM, Jim Anderson and Chris Perlitz, their feeling is that the, that the market understands EC fiber, understands what, what we're doing and would be far more receptive to municipal bonds from newer CUDs with far less experience. And so where it took us five years to, and legislation to get to the revenue bond market, you know, with a full four years of audited financials, et cetera, et cetera. As Laura mentioned in Act 71, the idea was, what could, what could we do to compress that down to one year or two years? So I have always thought frankly that the, you know, the overarching effort of the VCBB was to, was to get this, the CUDs going and getting customers so that that, so that the that five-year runway could be compressed down to to less time, and the bond market is ready for less time. So the question is, can it be a year? That would be, that would be a heavy lift. Can it be two years? You know, I think that's pretty straightforward, and, and I think that CV fiber's example is that is that they are, they're close to that two-year period, and the, and the main thing right now is get as many paying customers up as possible. And, you know, and start, and start getting into the market, and I know that that's what they're pursuing. So I'll, I'll comment about other things about that whole situation, you know, in writing. But I did want to clarify that the, the bond market is much more ready, and the fact that we got that rating from S and P last week is making, making a big difference. It made a big difference in our bond offering that we're going to be closing on, on November 29th. So anyway, I'm taking up too much time. Thank you.
Thank you, FX.
Ask a question of you, FX, before you depart.
Yeah, sure.
How long did it take you to get a bond rating? Just general, three months, four months? Weeks?
Six years. You know, we, 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 you know, we had, we, we issued our first $63.4 million in bonds, our unrated bonds. So that means that there are a lot of investors who are not allowed by their investment rules to invest in unrated bonds. It doesn't mean that they're not a, doesn't mean that they're not a good risk. It means that the issuer is probably paying a point or two more in interest.
When you applied, how long did it take to go from the application process to completion for a rating?
About three months.
Okay. Okay.
There was, there was, yeah. It was, I, I've never been through anything like it. It was, it was quite an interesting learning experience, and it was a lot of work by a lot of people to get to the point where we made our case in front of the folks at S and P.
Yep. Okay. Thank you very much for that. That's helpful.
Okay. Do we have any else from the public who would like to speak? Please raise your hand.
Okay, Christine, we have about 10 minutes. I'm just wondering if we could hit the parking lot.
Certainly.
Hey, Patty, I am just saying out loud that I don't have my draft policies available. I hope to get them done this week, but I'm obviously lagging my, my promise. So just wanted you to know, circumstances beyond my control.
I understand completely.
Yeah, I have to pull.
All the board members are doing a ton of work in addition to full-time jobs and full-time life. It is a juggle for all of us, and it's been an incredible lift. I'm just amazed how much we've been able to get done, quite honestly. So I appreciate everybody's work and hard work on us and time.
Is that the nature of a Thanksgiving message? Let's give thanks for five words for mine.
That will be my Thanksgiving toast. But if we could, Christine, if you have a chance to pull up the parking lot and go through that quickly.
Yes, I do. I've got it pulled up now, and I will share my screen. Okay, can you see the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay, so we've added a number of things to the parking lot since the last meeting. Many, many came up last, last time. So apply a scoring criteria policy. Ensure B submittal has adequate acronym boxes.
So Christine, on, on, on the applying scoring criteria policy, a little more verbiage on that. Remind me what that is.
I don't know what it is. Maybe Chance could weigh in on this one.
Some of these I just...
Sure, I can't, I can't.
Sure, I can't, I can't remember if it was Laura or Holly, but somebody had asked about seeing what this scoring criteria policy was going to look like for the sub-grantee selection applications. I would have to look back in a minute.
Yeah, okay, so we'll add for sub-grantee applications to that.
And it was, and it was me, and yes, I did.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, I just, I don't recall exactly what it is. I'm drawing a blank on what some of these are.
Develop an RFP for government affairs. We've got that one. We've got, you've got a commitment on that one.
Okay.
Policy development timeline. Process for approval of working group policy drafts.
So Christine, some of this is cryptic. Policy development timeline if needed. What is, I assume that's the subgroup working policy committees, subgroups on accountability. I assume that's what that is?
Correct.
And we had set at the last board meeting within 30 days from the last board meeting.
So we have a commitment on that then?
Yes.
Okay, so that.
And that, that should go to my name, signed to Patty.
Okay, you got that, Chance?
Yep.
Okay.
The next one is the process for approval of working group policy drafts. Rob Vetsky and, and myself and Tony worked on an outline that was part of the board packet, I believe. I think it was in here. Was that, am I mistaken or?
I didn't see it.
It is in here.
Yeah, it is.
It is in there.
PDF page 36. There's an outline in there, five steps. We can take this up at the next meeting. But that's what that, that one item was, number 47.
Okay, Chance, take note that we'll be covering that the next meeting. Create folder on website. We've, we've got that one. We understand what that means. Revising September 11.
And the ex parte caution memo was sent by email the date of the last board meeting. So if you're looking for that, it's in your email, your VCBB email.
Yep. Letters to memos and to House and Senate appropriation committee. That is part of, that will be part of our legislative discussion with the board, which we will hold on the next board meeting agenda. Produce an overlay of the bead and our tie lines and the grant request talents in the upcoming work of the board. We will, we will do that. We presented a, a timeline of the last board meeting and we'll modify that to include specifics for the grant, grants as well. That ties to that will be, the grant, the grant process will start as soon as we're done with the challenge process, which should be in March, but we'll, we'll update that and include it in the board packet. Proposed strategy for government affairs. We'll address that one in, in a future board meeting, but first thing to do is get the RFP out. This Patty to lead the board in a response to the orders report. That one's done, so I don't think we did, we need to do that.
Yeah, I mean, basically we said we'd respond to it. We did, but now we're doing the heavy work of policy creation. So I, I would, I would leave this on and just modify it and put in that right now we're at the state of creating policies, some of which will respond to the auditor's report.
Yep, and now, and all those policy assignments are below that bullet. So we'll modify that.
Chance could just modify that verbiage in there.
Yep.
Doing it.
Thank you.
Okay, did we miss anything? Missed anything?
So all subgroups, and I completely recognize on how they pointed out, we've all got full-time jobs and full-time life that we're trying to juggle around creating these policies. Our game plan is to get a draft in place for mid-December. I'm not sure that's doable. I'm, you know, in my head, I'm still going to the end of December is kind of a target to get everything done. But if your subgroup doesn't have a draft policy together, let's push that forward. Obviously, some of the subgroups are on different timelines, but the goal is to at least have a draft floating around.
Yeah, the future. Yeah, I just have one comment to make of parking lot. We'll, you know, we were, we were on a tight schedule this, this week, but we've assigned, Chance has taken on the assignment of pulling the parking lot items out of the board packet at each meeting and then we will, Chance and I'll review them before the board meeting.
Okay, and Christine, what is item 41, policy for certification of grantee compliance to performance and operating standards? Has my name on it.
I don't know. To go back and look at that.
If I could just interject, I think that might relate back to the issues we were having earlier in the summer before we were able to get people, the CUDs to agree to adopt, you know, language that committed them to future policies of the board. I think that's what that was.
Yeah, what I'll, what I'll do Patty, what we'll do is go back to that meeting and find out exactly what, what that language was. It'll either be closed or we'll revise it for the next meeting.
Okay, that's helpful.
And Patty, if I could be.
Go ahead, Tony.
I was just going to ask you if you wanted us to post your ex parte policy on the website.
Yes.
Okay, we'll do that.
And Christine, I will follow up with you, not today, because I've got to jump to some other meetings on the September minutes. We'll go over that.
Yeah, I'll actually have Chance that sets something up with the three of us.
Okay, sounds good. Excellent. All right, is there anything else for our group to touch on? All right, it is 11:58. A move that we adjourned. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dan. Before we adjourn, just a reminder or confirmation, our next board meeting is December 11th. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, at noon.
Tony has her hand up, Patty.
It just won't come down, Laura. Thank you. My team's is very sticky today and it's just, I haven't, I've been having a hard time getting it up and then it doesn't want to come down. It's just slow, but thank you.
Okay, great. Awesome. All those in favor of adjournings, please say aye.
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 Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, happy holidays, everyone.
Thanks for all your work, everybody, on that bead. Holy cow. And all the CUDs on the line and Vicuda staff. Wow. Wow, 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 wow.
And digital. Work going on.
Thank, thank you.
Bye, everybody.